We are live.
Thank you. Good morning. I would like to call to order the January 9th, 2021 Trotwood Madison Board of Education Retreat, which is a livestream via YouTube in accordance with the COVID-19 recommendation. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman? Yes. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bowlesman?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Scares, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I will need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions or additions to the agenda? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bowlesman?
Yes. Motion passes. I do want to entertain another motion board. I would like a motion for a loose meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly move this. Are there any questions about that?
I would like clarification. Does that mean we can sort of breathe a little?
Yes, that's what that means. So it's not as tied up, right?
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bowlesman?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna move from there and go right into our first item, which looks like is return to in-person learning.
Yes, as, as we all know, that is the big question of the day and there's so much that will impact that decision and so much that will come with making that decision. So I have quite a bit of information that I would like to share first so that when we have a discussion, you know, we all have at least a baseline of similar information. Of course, especially as this is a loose meeting, if you have questions along the way, we will entertain them and if not, and it happens during the discussion part, that's perfectly, you know, what, what we're prepared to do. So to get us started on that, I did ask our principals to prepare a short, you know, like three-minute conversation with you about how things are going in their buildings. And so I would like to get that part started. If, Luke, if you could share that document, it's the PowerPoint, that would be great. And Mr. McCray, just to let you know, I did go in, in order, starting at the high school, middle school, and on down. So you'll be first up. Next slide, please. Luke? Thank you.
You prepared for me to go now?
I am prepared for you to go now, if you are prepared for us. But let's say welcome, I guess, to everyone. We have a few minutes prior to coming on that we speak to one another, but I would like to say welcome to everybody else, if there is anyone else up at 8:30 to visit with us. So Mr. McCray, you ready to roll?
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. I hope everybody has wonderful holidays. Just to start off, the high school, things are going pretty good. We start off really well. The planning piece of virtual learning was really, really good, them two weeks that we planned to have our landing pages done, our Google Classroom. The staff did a great job of putting that together. Technology did an excellent job. You know, that first week was kind of rough, but right now, all our students have a hotspot or a laptop. Anytime they have any issues or concerns, we have a system in place where they can get a, get it replaced as soon as possible. Mr. Benton is there four days a week to make sure if any kid had any issues, that they can come back and get their laptops. Our attendance has been roughly around about 89%. That, that's pretty good because some days are better than others. The students are, tend to be well. We're making a lot of phone calls for the students that are not engaged. We, we made over 3,000 calls the first quarter. We made over 1,500 the second quarter. I mean, we're doing pretty good with remote learning. It's just, we do have some students that we have to get engaged and we have put a plan in place. Excuse me, I'm dealing with a little sinus issues. We put a plan together for our staff, our support staff, to reach out to kids and parents by parent phone.
If you know your digit extension, you can dial it at any time. If you are an existing subscriber and need help using your platform, press one for support.
That's not me.
Please call for the local agent.
That's coming from, that's coming from Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen. Part of my presentation of being loose either. So, so right now, the staff is, we did have to make some adjustments at how much work we were giving kids at the beginning. We was looking at it just like regular school. We were giving them a lot of assignments. We did have to make some adjustments to it. The students really appreciated it. The one thing that I really enjoy, you really get a lot of emails from kids now. You get a lot more communication. When they need some issues or problems, they will, I mean, I, I, I receive emails every week. But everything is going pretty good. We've been in the blender for a couple of weeks. That was a little difficult just because of quarantine piece. When one or two people get, get affected by the virus or been in contact, that, that was very difficult. Finding coverage for staff and having some students have to stay remotely, just making that adjustment was, was difficult. But the staff did a good job of planning and they still are working extremely hard to make sure our students receive what they need to receive on a day-to-day basis. But you know, like I told them from the first meeting, we did have to make a lot of adjustments, you know, because it's new for everyone and we are continuing to do that to make sure we provide our students with the best possible education they can receive. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we'll move through it. And again, as I said, if you have questions, you can either ask them now or hold them till later. Mr. Gibson, are you ready?
Sure.
Right.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy New Years. Just kind of get going, piggyback off McCray. We started out, you know, attendance was an issue when we first started out, but like I said, we, we, we put a team together and made sure everybody got their devices. Everybody knew how to get those resources. As a result, our attendance, as we progressed through the quarter and the semester, it got a lot better. We knew we were able to group the students that we really needed to target and try to put some things in place to impact those students. You know, one thing that come from this is how, some of the things that we, we've done in the past, we've been able to ramp up, you know, specifically like our PBIS and things we do to really motivate students to do what we call the Rams' Expectations. So we've seen some positive impact from those things. So before I even get going, thank you guys and whoever approved us to have some funds, the, the tie in some of those PBIS things to motivate kids. So that was, that was, that was helpful for us as well. And as a result, kids are more engaged and learning is happening. One of the things that happened earlier in the semester, as McCray talked about earlier, so we, we did notice we had a lot of S's. But from that, we had some, some great dialogue. We started looking at our processes. We started looking at our grading procedures. So it's been some great dialogue that I think helps us in the future. Now that we're really looking at how are we grading and maybe go back and adjust some policies. That, that was a great dialogue that I'm not sure would have happened had this not been in place. As a result, we finished out with about a 20% reduction in F's. Our teachers really got intentional about how they were assessing students, which, like I said, a lot of the things that we're learning right now benefit us when the kids do come back. So they're taking that with them. So that was very important. Let me think. So right now, where we're at as far as this semester, we kind of have a focus for the second semester. We, we really now that we, we know exactly what we're doing, we know how online learning should look. Our teachers are very comfortable teaching in this online format right now. So right now, in the second semester, our teachers are really intentional about the instruction right now, going through the second semester, like who's learning? And if they're not getting it, what do I need to adjust as a teacher to make sure students are learning? That's, that's just a powerful place to be when they're really intentional about looking at data and who's learning and who's not learning. So I'm comfortable where we're at right now. I don't know what questions that you guys have. I don't want to restate everything McCray said, but a lot of it's kind of the same as far as where we're at. But I do think we're moving in the right direction.
Mr. Gibson, do you have any idea about your attendance? How, how is that going?
Yeah, roughly about the 90%, a little higher than that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Nadir had a, a pre-planned thing that he needed to do. He did send his information and asked if I would read it. So if you will bear with me, I will find that right now and I will read his information that he wanted to share with you all.
While you're looking for that, Mr. Gibson, I had a question on your PBS, PBIS rewards that have motivated the students. Can you just give us an example of some of those?
Yes, definitely. We just kicked off the end of the semester. We had the Rams' Rally each grade. So one of the things that we, we kind of purchased some items and if kids were in class on time, they were engaged answering questions and they were motivated to complete their tasks and they didn't have an F, they went into, well, we had a couple of different raffles that we had. And then we, we was able to get some big ticket items as well. So the kids knew the expectations and they knew they needed to be in class on time. And since we don't always make sure the camera's on, they just needed to, they have to be able to respond to those questions. The teacher asks the question through, well, we use Perdeck. So, so we can always monitor if they're engaged. And if the student is doing these things continuously, their name went into this raffle. So what we, what we just, it's funny because I just, we just had a conversation with one of our classes. The worst period of the day is always that first period, that 8:30 class. Well, it's funny that we come in in second semester and she literally had 100% attendance at an 8:30 class on a Monday. So you're saying benefits of kids, oh, oh, I want to get there. I want to get on time. I want to make sure I'm following these expectations. So we contribute that to us teaching those expectations. Kids know there, there's a dangling of the things that they want, but importantly, that they're, what we need happening is that they're in those classrooms. So that, that's some of it. I think if you go on the landing page, we might have posted some of the video from, you know, the big ticket items. I posted some pictures when we went out to the houses over the break, take to some of the kids. I won't go into the stories of some of the parents when we took some of the stuff to them, but there were some, there were some great stories. I almost wish we did a better job. And I know you guys talked about telling our story. I almost wish I would have did a better job of capturing some of those stories because, you know, one of those parents, specifically a student, specifically on the IEP and because of how we outlined and the structures we put in place was having so much success, came to Trotwood, they're so excited, were nervous to come here because everything they heard, but they were just so excited that they came. And I, as, as I was at her house delivering it, all I could think about was, man, this is the type of story we really need to be telling because it was powerful. I know I went on a rant, but it was, it was worth noting, but it was beautiful. So those are some of the things that are happening.
Yeah, also, Mr. Gibson, can you tell us what some of the big ticket items were?
Yeah, one of it was like a hoverboard, a Nintendo, Nintendo Switch. We kind of surveyed the students on things that motivated them, that liked, they loved. We even had headphones. So it was some of those, you know, you really had to do a lot to get the big ticket items. Like you had to have no F's. You had to follow all of these expectations. So there was some low-hanging fruit. That was the bigger thing, like kids knowing that you can get a homework pass. There are some little things that the hallways are doing, but to put those big ticket items, you had to be doing it for a duration of time.
Thank you.
May I add in? I'm glad Daniel brought that up because we did the same thing at the high school. We kind of talked together. We do, we, we got better big items. The high school students, we got iPads, we have TVs, we have Beats headphones. We, we got some items that we're going to roll out this second semester and also go back and recognize some of the kids from the first semester. And they're going into a raffle too. So we did the same thing at the high school to try to motivate. And we also used the little, the little stuff like the virtual signs and.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Five-point bump in the grade or a 10-point bump in the grade. So we did the same type of framework as in the middle school.
That is so, that, that is inspiring to hear that we're doing that and finding that way to motivate students. And I also like, Mr. Gibson, that you did a survey with the students to give them ownership so they, they felt they had a say in the rewards that they were getting, which make I'm sure they'll want to do it more. Could you share with us, you all, some other time, or just send us what those guidelines are for the rewards? Or are they posted on the landing page?
They, they, they might be on my landing, the landing page on the middle school, but if not, I'll, I'll, I'll send you to your updated one. We kind of change it out every time I do a parent newsletter, but we did have those Rams' requirements for that. If it's not on there, I'll definitely send it to you. I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure y'all get that.
All right. Good job. I think I want to get my name in the high school one so I could use a TV. So I am going to speak for Mr. Nadir and this is Westbrook Village Elementary. Student engagement and participation. All of the students at Westbrook Village have a Chromebook and connectivity. We have provided hotspots to those families without internet access. Through the utilization of online resources such as Perdeck, EdPuzzle, and NearPod, teachers are getting better at engaging students while delivering instruction virtually. We have decreased the number of students with failing grades by 30% by reducing the number of assignments given weekly, providing opportunities to redo assignments, attendance incentives, and given an alternate way to provide evidence of learning other than tests. For example, they can make a poster, write a song or a poem, create a skit, movement, et cetera. Incentives to promote engagement and participation. PBIS rewards, opportunities, staff can immediately, oh, an app, I'm sorry. Staff can immediately acknowledge student engagement, participation, and behavior from a mobile device or computer through a web browser that rewards RAM points. Students earn RAM points for the following. It is required to be tied to virtual learning class management plans. RAM points can be used to purchase things at the class store. They can earn their way into online raffles and events. Attendance. Each conference at Westbrook Village, and they are broken up by Atlantic 10, Mid-American, I'm sorry, Big Ten and HBCU. And they have raffles tied to this incentivizing attendance with a special focus on participation. Some conferences have incorporated earning RAM points to incentive attendance and promote participation and engagement. Related arts teachers are utilizing raffles to promote attendance to their classes as well. Supports interventions focused on promoting student and family engagement. Support staff members, our student engagers, restorative justice specialists, dean, social worker, school counselor are assigned to support each conference at Westbrook Village. Attendance Call Dailies. They create, monitor, and maintain conference records pertaining to attendance and participation. Go Guardian Video Calls with students are made, home visits when needed. Parent Square Communication with families, tech Zoom supports for teachers, chat monitoring for live Zoom instruction, small group intervention when requested, Student of the Month and Family of the Month are programs they have. Supplemental programs during first semester. They did have Girls on the Run. Each week, the girls focused on social and emotional learning. They were taught strategies to be confident, convey their emotions in a healthy way, and how to be a friend. We held virtual meetings and there was a Google Classroom setup where the strategies were reinforced and encouraged. Normally, at the end of each session, there is a K-Walk, but due to COVID-19, that was canceled. So as a community service project, the girls created a thank you video to frontline workers, which led to Westbrook Village, Village's GOTR program being nominated by the Dayton Daily News for supporting the essential workers during the pandemic. The LEGO Robotics Robo-Rams. There are 10 members of the Robo-Rams. They have been preparing for the regional tournament that has been moved to May. Currently, they meet on Wednesdays in the building from 3:30 to 5:00. The students are divided into teams of three. Each team has chosen which robot missions they want to accomplish. In their teams, they have to create a code for their LEGO robot. In addition to the robot missions, students are completing their innovation project. Students have to come up with a creative and innovative way to get children more active. Robo-Rams has recognized that children spend too much time on video games. Their solution is to create physical activity games based around their favorite video games. And that is Mr. Nadir's presentation. I think he did a good job of putting that together. I can't really probably answer any of his questions, but we can move on to Ms. Rizzo from Madison Park.
Good morning, everyone. Can you guys hear me? I'm trying my headphones out, so everybody's good. You can hear me. Okay. Our teachers and families have been working tremendously hard to make the experience at, at Madison Park a positive experience for everyone. I try to make sure that I commend our families on a regular basis for their work in partnership with the teachers because, as we know, it, it takes everyone to make this process a positive experience for all. We couldn't do it without the parents and the parents couldn't do it without the teachers. So I commend all of our staff for, for working very hard to make sure that, that learning continues to be at the forefront for everyone. We have a strong support system using our technology coordinator, our counselor, student engager, social worker, mental health support, secretaries. Everyone is, is working together on attendance, on the PBIS piece for Madison Park and making sure that, that communication is, is, is an easy task for everyone. We've made it very clear to everyone that we want everyone to always be easily accessible and we've made sure that all students have computers. They have the hotspots. We have our coordinator, our technology coordinator. His number is out there for the public. So he is contacted on a regular basis. And you know, our goal is if anybody has a computer issue or technology issue, it is fixed within 24 hours. We've tried to set up, for broken computers, we've set up payment plans for teacher or for parents so that there is not a, a loss in instruction for a time so that we can get those computers to those people. And if it comes to needing to deliver those computers or, or technology pieces, we have plenty of people in line to, to make those deliveries. Let's see. As far as our lessons, our teachers have been working diligently as a collaborative team to make sure the lessons are appropriate for all students. We're using a lot of different resources to, to make it a little more exciting and a little more interactive with the students. So, you know, the more engaging the lesson, we definitely have found, the more likely the kids be focused and want to participate. You know, we found that the, they don't, they can't sit, they can't just sit and listen for three, four hours a day. They really have to be engaged in some type of, of online activity. We have been using our data to, to develop small group activities for the afternoons. So in general, the mornings are whole group instruction and the afternoons are small group instruction to meet, you know, individual deficits. Let's see. Our attendance has been around 85% to encourage attendance at the end of the year. Prior to break, we did have an attendance challenge, trying to make sure that, you know, there's an incentive to get the, the students to participate. So on that Friday before break, we were able to deliver prizes to a classroom. So we got our support staff together and we went out on Friday and made home deliveries to celebrate those students that earned the perfect attendance, or not the perfect attendance, the high attendance award for their classroom. We are working on our newly acquired PBIS system. We just got that up and running really in the last week. We are still kind of learning the ins and outs of the program. So I will be working with Mr. Nadir to try and, try and get a better understanding of how all of that works, but my counselor is kind of leading that charge with the support staff members and members of the PBIS team. So we will have a similar program in place to Mr. Nadir at Westbrook Village where the kids can earn points on a regular basis. Let's see. I think that is about everything. Did I miss anything, Dr. Cosby?
I think you covered things quite well. We can ask if anyone has any questions.
Jessica, attendance, only because we got it from, you know, Mr. McCray and Mr. Gibson.
Right. I, I must have spoke too fast. Attendance is a, it runs around 85% on average throughout the last semester.
I will, I will say, I do.
To address attendance, we do, we have support staff within the classrooms that, you know, if a student is not on or having difficulty, they do get that immediate phone call. We do try and track every student that is, is not getting on. We've made home visits to those people that seem to be, be struggling with just the, the act of getting on regularly. So we've kind of been trying to, to come up with some ways to better serve those students. If, if the technology piece seems to just not be working, we, as a group, have been kind of discussing some other alternatives just so that we can at least find out a little bit of information about what this child is able to do and provide them some form of resource so that they're at least actively engaged in learning. And that might come down to providing some, some paper pencil activities where, you know, they're able to show understanding. But that is a very few amount of students.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Did that answer your question, Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes, it did. And I do like that you do and that your staff recognized that some students may not be able to work Perdeck or one of those other platforms and you're providing alternatives to that. So thank you.
Well, that's, that's what we're working on right now. Thanks.
All right, then that brings us to the ELC. Mr. Warner?
Good morning, everyone. I hope, since we're a little loose here, I hope you allow me to start with that kind of a personal celebration for my family. I don't know how many of you knew that my son, my 16-year-old son has been battling cancer since August. And, and so he have had six cycles of five days of hospital stays where he received chemo and he completed last night. of hospital stays where he received chemo and he completed last night his final chemo cycle. And we were able to get home to, uh, last night at about, about midnight. Um, and so we are, as a family, celebrating that. We believe that this, uh, treatment will take care of um, the cancer, everything. All measurements have been, uh, showing that the tumor is shrinking. And, uh, so we are, we are really excited about that and, uh, and we're celebrating that, um, together. If I seem a little bleary-eyed of all of our celebration, it probably wasn't until two or two-thirty that we finally told the kids like, okay, we all gotta go to bed. Um, but like it's been a long road and, um, I just wanna say thank you to my colleagues and, um, uh, Dr. Cosby. We're not out of the woods yet, um, but there's so much support, um, in the building and at district office. And, uh, it's just been, um, it's been, we've been really blessed by it. So, uh, just thank you and just wanted to share that celebration with you before I started. A pretty big, pretty big deal. Yeah. So, um, sir, congratulations. Uh, so we at the E L C have, uh, have been doing, participating in the same activities that you've, you've already heard. Um, and our tennis is running in the, the same, uh, in the same spot about, about eighty-five percent. Um, when students are, when we see a concern there, we have kind of a system. Um, at the E L C, we call it the swap team. It's a student wraparound professionals. And so that includes, um, me, it includes our sort of justice specialist, our school counselor, our mental health professionals, our social worker, um, and our student encourager. Um, I think I got everybody there. Also our parent engager too. And so that's our swap team, student, student wraparound professionals. And so their, their, their processes to try to put around, um, for any students that are struggling to put all kinds, all of our services comprehensively around them. Um, so that's, that's kind of their job. And so our process is, um, if we or one of the teachers feels that there is a need there, there is a Google form that they fill out and that Google form is submitted. It asks a whole bunch of questions about like what, what's the concern, who the student is, those kinds of things. Um, that goes to Ms. Morningstar, which is our lead of that team and our school counselor. And then that team meets twice a week. They meet once to identify the, uh, students and divide up those students to the right uh, professional there. And then it meets a second time to follow up, uh, with how those meetings went. And so, uh, whether it's attendance or student, or you know, social emotional learning or, uh, mental health concerns or family concerns, um, that, that, that's what they do. That they, uh, they put supports in. That could mean, um, increased phone calls. It could mean a setup with, uh, one of the social workers or with our social worker for some counseling. It could mean, uh, a referral to the good Samaritan, uh, health, mental health therapist. Um, it could mean a home visit by any one of those people. Um, so it could be lots of different things, but those are the services that we've kind of put around all of them. Um, and, and they're working and they're, and they're working hard. And so this, it's been, I've been really proud of, uh, the work that they've done and, uh, how hard that's been and how they've adapted to things in the system they put in. As far as P B I S, we have not, we have done some of the same things that everybody else has done as far as the signs in the yard, celebrating the students. Um, we are trying to roll out some more, um, uh, recognitions like in S F R certificates, teach students of the month and then also buttons. Um, and we, so we try to kick off buttons like, um, and rewards like Martin Luther King Courage Award or, um, what was the other one that I had? It was the, I want to make sure I say it right, the Rosa Parks Courage Award. So we're trying to blend, um, you know, really great qualities with some of our African-American heroes in history and trying to get that started with our, with our students as well. As far as instruction goes, our teachers have, are again, just like everybody else, they're getting better and better. I tell the teachers that some of them have missed their callings as student television, uh, uh, kid television, uh, host. They're so engaging. Uh, they've been doing, they're getting better and better with that. Some of our teachers are doing a whole class, um, together online and that whole class is online with together. And then some of them are, they're doing small groups and the small groups roll in and out through the day. Um, depending on the teacher, that's how they structured their classrooms and that seems to be working for them and, um, and, and going well. Uh, we're continuing our plan with our literacy plan. We've continued to make progress on that. Um, trying to still kind of push in towards more, uh, assessment. And then, you know, at the, at our level, our assessment happens one-on-one like this. And so there's all kinds of challenges that that presents, but I feel like that we're doing better with that. And then we're starting to look at those student data sheets. If you remember, uh, before we've looked at, I've showed you the student data sheets that we look at. Um, we've, we're starting to move back into that practice and doing that. In addition, uh, as far as professional development, uh, we are also blending that literacy plan with conscious discipline, which is our student, uh, social emotional learning. I'm sure you will hear from Ms. Mallory later on today about, uh, social emotional learning. But for social emotional learning, that is conscious discipline at the E L C. And so we are continuing to do, um, sessions every week, uh, with, with a social emotional learning conscious discipline, uh, where we as a staff are learning together. And then also, uh, we have an equity-focused meeting every week, every week as well. So we're, we got, we have a lot going on, a lot of meetings together, but we try to keep our, our, our foot on the pedal with, uh, with student learning and with professional development.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. That's excellent. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. I have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, my brain operates in themes. So that's how, when I took my notes, I just kind of like put everything in themes. This is specifically for you, Mr. Warner. This is just across the board. So as I was listening to everyone, of course, I had, I put my own business in the street, right? Since we're a loose meeting and that's just kind of how I am. And so, you know, Myron is at the high school. And during the first quarter, I guess he thought he was a grown man and he didn't, he wasn't logging into his classes. Like just a couple of them, he just decided, you know what, I'm a grown man and I'm not going to log into my classes. And I guess a few of his friends must have told him, well, attendance points don't really count, so you don't have to log in. And so I, he just decided, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm just not gonna log in. And I did not know that he wasn't logging in until I, until I went to the Zoom conference and they were like, yeah, he, I just saw him like yesterday for the first time in two weeks, you know, like he was not even, he would come into the room with the laptop, but was just like, I took, taking a nap or something. I don't know what he was doing. So as I was like taking my notes, I noticed that Mr. Gibson mentioned login. Ms. Rizzo mentioned something about logging in. I noticed that, uh, from Warner, Rizzo, Nadir, all three mentioned home, family. Mr. Gibson said went to the home, nothing from the high school about home. And so I started thinking from Warner to Nadir, there's a family focus, but I feel like we lose it from the middle school to the high school. And I think had I known that he had, that he thought he had an option to log in or had there been more of a connection maybe to me and the high school or what he can or cannot do, I think I could have done more on my end. Once I got, you know, had the conferences, of course, then I was able to, you know, step on his neck a little more tightly. But before that, I had no idea. And so I'm curious as to why there, and this could be instructional and maybe I just don't know. That's why I'm deferring to you guys, why we're so tight on family from Warner to Nadir, but we lose it from Gibson to McCray? And what can we do about the students not logging in and just their, I guess, what can, how can we tighten that up a little bit more?
Mike, can I jump in there first, if you don't mind? I, I will say we've been able to now that we got Parent Square. You know, we, we, we struggled early when the year first started on our way, we were going to communicate. Uh, so we, it was a tougher task when kids weren't there in the beginning. But now that we have Parent Square, in the moment, if a kid's not in class, we have somebody messaging the parent like, hey, that kid's not in class. Uh, that's part of how we're using our support staff now. So it's kind of that wraparound. So parents should be getting a text message or an email or something through us finally having that parent square to say, hey, this kid's not in class. So I think now that we have a system or something in place that helps us with that communication, I thought, I thought it got a lot better. So hopefully you, you're getting those calls or something.
Okay. So from middle school, you think from the middle school for you, you think it's improving?
Oh, definitely, definitely. No doubt.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Uh, from, from the high school, I guess, um, it's gonna sound redundant, but Parent Square has helped us a lot in our communication. Uh, cause we get emails out. Now we know how to get information to staff, I mean, to parents quicker. Uh, we did change our process with our support staff early on because we had to do a better job of monitoring what they were doing. Uh, you know, we did put things in place, but we recognize that we have to meet on a regular basis to make sure that they're making them phone calls and doing the things they need to do. And now we have a better system in place of doing that. Like I said, that we did reach out to about three, we did make about three thousand contacts during the first quarter. Uh, uh, then it dropped a little second quarter due to the fact that we got an extra two weeks. I mean, we had less quarter, but we've been making them contact. But I think we had recognized that administrative team at the high school, we gotta do a better job of monitoring the people that are supposed to be monitoring the students and making sure that they do a better job of contacting parents. And so we don't, we don't revise our plan. The one thing I will say, Ms. Bowden, this, this is a learning process. And so some of the things that we think we're going to work and be successful, we gotta go back and make adjustments to. Uh, that's the one thing I would say about the online that is, uh, is always a, a adjustment. Uh, because you think you got a great plan in place and then you go recognize there's some holes and spots there that you need to do a, a better job. Uh, and we are, I think we're doing a better job. Um, I think we're holding the people that are making the phone calls, uh, uh, and the contacts. Um, I even bring them into the building, uh, three days a week, uh, to make sure that new things are being done. Uh, then there's also the, we believe our high school students are more, like you said, grown. All right. Uh, when we think that they should have more, take more responsibility, but sometimes our staff gotta recognize they still are young adults and we still have to be able to, uh, push and motivate them because they will play us just like I've tried to play my mother back in the day too.
Cause I noticed as I, you know, I'm used to be an advisor for a youth group and sometimes when they, just because they look big, because you know, my son's a big tall boy, big old thing. We look at that and we think, oh, we let the size make us think that they can do certain things, but they can't. And so we still have to nurture them along the way. So just because they're in high school, they look all big, doesn't mean that they still don't need those phone calls and that little push. And they're, because they're not grown, they're still kids, you know, they're still kids.
Ms. Bowden, first of all, I was smiling when you were talking about Myron, cause I can see him doing all the things that you're saying. I did not have a problem, uh, recognizing him doing any of those things. I was smiling the whole time. Uh, but you know, that, that piece has been challenging for every building and it manifests itself in different ways. And you know, even for probably my building and probably for Tammy's too, the, the element of daycare, we have a significant amount of kids that are in daycare. Well, these daycares that the students might be in for eight to 10 hours a day have varying levels of implementation of, of the online learning platform. And some of them will straight up tell us like, we're, you know, we're not, we're not responsible for that and we're not helping with it. And so we've been trying to be proactive, Ella Jordan, Isaac and I have tried to call all of them together and for a Zoom meeting to say like, how can we help you? How can we be more of a support to you? But there are so many different layers of family involvement, you know, that, that change our work at every, at each of the buildings. Um, and each of us will have a different and unique plan on how to, how to reach them. But you know, like, like we've said, we're learning and there's, there's been no book on how to do it. Um, it's been, it's definitely been challenging, but if you think, if you're a single mom and you're working all day and your kid is in daycare and then you come home and you gotta, you gotta do the dishes and you gotta do the laundry and you gotta pay the bills and do all kinds of other things and then get on with your student in the evening and help them do a little bit of stuff. And you know, it's those kind of parents that we're balancing that's like, yeah, we want to hold them accountable, but we also want to have some empathy for what this COVID time of education means for their lives as well. So we're all, you know, we're constantly doing, you know, this with them.
Yeah, we're all balancing. We're all balancing.
Given that, um, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Warner, for sharing your story about your family. Um, I think, you know, as a district, um, we are a district-wide family. And, um, anytime that something is going on with any of our staff members, our students or our families, anything that we can do at all to support them, we, we like to make sure that that is in place. So I just wanted to say thank you for sharing that and, um, I want to thank you also, Dr. Cosby, for making sure that Mr. Warner and his family had the support. And, uh, congratulations on having your son back home. That is such good news.
Yeah, we're excited. Thank you.
All right. Well, I think we got a great update from our, um, principals. And you can see I have an excellent team here. I, I appreciate that we also gave them some things to think about. You know, how to, uh, make sure that, um, parents are being contacted when there's a significant number of absences. And, and of course we have a lot of people who facilitate that, but bottom line, the teachers need to acknowledge that they haven't seen a kid in so long. So let's remind our teachers to notify someone on the team when, you know, students are not logging on because for whatever reason, that's where we have to start to look at fixing that. Okay. So Luke, could you please move us to the next slide? And what we're gonna do at this point.
Dr. Cosby, President Bowden, can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Um, I wanted to just say, apologize to, uh, Mr. McCray, McCray for interrupting his presentation, but we had some board docs, doc problems. But I wanted to say, um, I, I heard, um, Mr. Mr. Gibson talk about where the money came from to fund the P B I S and I wanted to just speak to that. We actually put in each, um, um, school budgets, um, twelve dollars per student for P B I S. And then in addition to that, we pay for some of the incentives from the cares money. So I just wanted to let everyone know where that money came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. Yeah. We, um, that money can be used for anything that will help facilitate our work during this COVID time. So what we're talking about now, just to, um, refresh everybody's memory is our return to school plan. And I thought it was important that we heard how things are going today in the classroom. So now we're gonna talk about, um, what's happening, you know, across Ohio, across, um, our county and in Trotwood as far as COVID. I have asked each of the members of my executive team to present a portion of this presentation. And so we're gonna start with Mr. Howard. And, and I want to say, and I am, um, glad that this is more of a loose meeting so that I can say this. We're pulling numbers together, you know, every day. We're looking at information on a daily basis, but we are all aware that these things are changing on a dime. We could be sitting here talking this and just like happened in our last board meeting, someone could get an email and say, oh, that's changed. So we're gonna present to you, um, what we have as of now. And, and again, if anyone, when, when someone finishes, if you'd like to add or, you know, clarify or something that you may have heard, please feel free to do that. So Mr. Howard, are you ready?
I am, I am here. Luke, um, I'm gonna need to share my screen. Thank you. Give me just a second. Can you guys see that?
Not yet.
Okay.
Real quick, can I ask a question?
Sure.
While we're doing that, um, Mr. Warner, are you still here?
Yes.
I am. Hit my mute button.
Did you finish your doctorate?
No, sir. Uh, I, uh, as you can imagine, the, um, between, between the move from the middle school to the E L C, which was a universe shift for me. And then, and then the COVID with the cancer. Gotcha. You can imagine like my, things have slowed down a little bit for me. Uh, I, I just got in touch with my advisor, hoping through the spring, but it might even have to be, start back up in the, in the summertime. Um, I, I'm done with all my coursework. Um, I just have to get into that, into that dissertation. And I know, I see some of you shaking your heads, cause you know what that's like. And so I've just had to get back in that dissertation to get myself refamiliarized with all of that again and get my, get my, um, my behind back in here.
I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask. I knew you had been, um, actively pursuing. I didn't know how close you were, so.
Yeah, I'm pre-dissertation. Thank you for asking.
No problem, no problem. Thank you, Ms. Bowden.
Okay. Can, can you see my screen now? COVID-19?
Oh, okay. Can, can you see my screen now? COVID-19 information should be on your screen.
Yes, we see it.
Okay. Um, what I, what I did is, um, Dr. Cosby asked me to, um, collect some, um, some cumulative data with regards to, uh, COVID, uh, 19 and, uh, just share, uh, in summary form, the, the information, um, that is current and present as of, uh, yesterday, Friday afternoon. Uh, what I did is I put together just a quick, um, two-page summary scan of where we are as a state with regards to COVID. And it is just, again, all information that you can pull, uh, that you can view directly from the, um, COVID-19, uh, database or dashboard, as they call it, that the state of Ohio has put together. Um, it is updated on a daily basis. I check it, uh, once a day just to, uh, just, just to, you know, for my own purchase, personal interest. And also with, um, you know, with interest in relative to what's going on in the state, what's going on locally and what's going on, um, across the nation. So, um, what I, what I've done is just, again, just put together a little summary. The, uh, initial information gives the total population of the state of Ohio. And as of yesterday afternoon, how many confirmed cases, how many confirmed cases, uh, there have been in the state? And how many presumed recovered cases? And again, all those important numbers are highlighted. So you can see, I won't read all of the information to you. Um, um, one important, uh, I believe number is the last bullet where it talks about the current state, current state positivity rate, which is a seven-day moving average right now of about 14%. Uh, down from a few weeks ago. But what that number details is of the number of tests taken during a specific day of an individual day, how many of those tests are coming back positive? So as of, um, as of yesterday, the state positivity rate, uh, has a seven-day moving, seven-day moving average of 14%. So 14% of the tests that are taken during any said day are coming back, excuse me, coming back positive. Also talks about some median information, age of contraction of the, of the virus, median age of death. Um, and the fact that there have been roughly over eight million COVID-19 tests taken in the state. As we move down Montgomery County, uh, the population of the county is highlighted. Um, at this point, uh, Montgomery County has the highest number of cumulative cases within the state of Ohio behind Franklin County, which, uh, Columbus, of course, is the county seat. Cuyahoga County, which Cleveland is the county seat, and Hamilton County. Uh, the number of cases, although higher, it is not an outlier as it, um, as it lines up pretty directly with the per capita information for, for the state of Ohio. More people you got, the more cases you're going to have. Um, Ohio, excuse me, um, Akron, Summit County in Akron is right behind Montgomery County. And it has the fourth highest population, but the fifth highest number of cases. And relatively speaking, it's not much larger than Montgomery County. So those two counties kind of go back and forth with regards to who comes in fourth. But of course you can see the larger cities, uh, with the larger counties, larger, more denser populations have the higher number of cases. Um, for Montgomery County, as of yesterday, there were 38, 840, 45 total cases that have been reported since March 1st, with the presumed, uh, 31,942 of those individuals recovered. 3386 hospitalizations and a total of 380 deaths since March 1st, 2020. Uh, roughly 90% of the deaths in the county since March 1st have fallen within their age range of 60 to 80-plus years. And this is a consistent number with the state as 95% of the dates fall within that 60 to 80-plus range, deaths, excuse me. Uh, the current cumulative number per capita, uh, 100,000 per 100,000 people from Montgomery County is 693.83 cases. Currently, the city of Trotwood has 1,206 reported cases as of yesterday. This is the total number of cases reported since March 1. Roughly 1,000 to 1,100 of those cases are presumed recovered individuals. Um, the initial, um, the initial date of, of the, um, deliberation of this information and the distribution of this information, Trotwood, the 45426 area code had a, uh, a significantly higher number of cases, uh, since, uh, the, the prolonged reporting and the continued reporting, uh, Trotwood, the 45426 area code. And again, there are other area codes in our, in our, um, in, in our school district, but 26 being the one most specifically where, uh, the buildings are located. That case positivity and cumulative cases has come down. And I think at this point we are somewhere around 45426 is somewhere around seventh or eighth as far as total number of cases within, uh, within the county. So, uh, that number has come down significantly. But again, it does not contrast the point that the less amount of people, especially African-American people, the less amount that we have, we have a higher amount of cases, uh, per, per, you know, large number of per capita per se. So I did want to share that information. And again, all of this information is provided and accessible via the Ohio COVID-19 dashboard. If you have never seen that dashboard, it is a very cumbersome, uh, but very informative. Once you, uh, once you figure your way around it. As far as the district is concerned, um, just a real quick summary. To date, uh, Trotwood Madison City Schools has reported 13 students and 28 staff members for a total of 41 reported cases for the district. Um, at this point, the district is aware of zero hospitalizations from the reported cases. But this does not mean there were no hos- hospitalizations, simply none were reported. Uh, no, there were no COVID-19 cases reported prior to, or hospitalizations prior to the mandated reporting in the directive of the governor. We are aware of two individuals that were hospitalized and roughly about eight cases prior to the mandated reporting. But since mandated reporting, we have 41 total cases and zero hospitalizations. Uh, case positivity is reported direct, reported to the Director of Human Resources and then reported to Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County, according to the guidelines outlined by O D H Ohio Department of Health. Uh, positivity information is shared with district stakeholders, then posted on the front page of the district website in accordance to the governor's order. And there is also a, a, um, a link on the, the COVID dashboard that highlights all districts in the state and their positivity information, the number of cases, the number of student cases, so on and so forth. It runs roughly a week and a half to two weeks behind because of the overstressing and the overtaxing of the folks in the health departments with their reporting. So the most current information is always on the front page of our website. Uh, Dr. Davis has to submit that information within, uh, 24 hours of a informed positive case. So some points for reflection as we, um, as we move back and, um, other folks will kind of touch on these a little bit as we move back and start discussing, um, our, our re-entry plan. Uh, new quarantine guidelines for the schools, uh, we may have a little more definition and, and, and this discussion about this. Um, I believe Dr. Davis may be talking about that a little bit. Uh, vaccine distribution plans for the school, I'm sure Dr. Cosby will share some of that information. The new variants of the virus, uh, is it more contagious? Uh, the, the information we have says it's yes, it's more contagious, but not as deadly or leads to a higher rate of mortality. So, um, the information also does discuss that the current vaccines do address, uh, the, the new variances of the virus and, uh, will be, um, successful in helping prevent, um, severe disease or mortality. And the end of the FFCRA program as of December 31st, 2020. So, um, again, all of this information is, um, is accessible via the COVID dashboard that the state of Ohio updates every day roughly around 2:30. Uh, after about 2:30, uh, you will see the new numbers. And then of course, on the front page of our website, uh, we, we do, um, update all of our reported cases to the district with regards to students and staff. That is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Marlon. Um, I, I would like to say as, uh, Mr. Howard and I talked about this, um, in person as we talked, the overall consensus of what's going on in our, um, in our school district area is that even though, um, you know, we still, our numbers are high, they are not getting higher. We actually, they're getting lower and, you know, or staying steady. Again, this changes, but that is good news for us. Um, we're going to move on to the next one, but I would like to ask, I want to share a piece of information with you. And if, um, Ms. Bozeman is okay with this, maybe we take a little five-minute break. I did receive notification just now that our former principal, David White's wife passed away last night due to COVID. Um, so I said that, um, she, the person who shared it with me had asked if I would, um, share that because they know how much you all, you know, are involved with that, um, principal. And, um, I remember him as well, and I did not meet his wife, but I'm sure she was lovely. Okay. Can, Ms. Bozeman, is it okay? We're about an hour in.
Let me, let me ask one question real quick. Sorry, Ms. Bozeman.
That's okay.
Ms., Mr. Howard, the, um, the number that you shared for the district, is that overall or is that more within a particular period of time? Are, are you, are you referencing the total number of cases? Yeah, just for the district. Yes, that, that at this point is as of, as of yesterday, total number of 41 cases, a student and staff. Okay. Thank you, sir. But that is as of, also of course, prior to the governor's mandate, there were roughly about eight to 10 cases that, um, that staff informed us of. But that number is sub-zero from the date the, uh, the governor required us to start the mandated reporting. Okay. And, and that was what, March, April? Uh, I believe it was September. Believe it was September, September 1st, maybe. Is that right, Dr. Dr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe it was September. So all of those numbers that we've had, that you, that you, um, that you gave us was since we had mandated reporting since September? September, I believe September 1st or that first week of September, yes. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, no problem.
Okay. So five minutes. Dr. Cosby, you want five minutes?
Yeah, is that okay with everyone? Five minutes?
Okay. Be back. All right.
Please ask that as you come back or as you leave, mute yourselves because, uh, the stream will still remain live. Thank you.
Thank goodness for curing. So five-minute cup coffee.
Ms. Bozeman, I think we've had about the five minutes. I'm not sure, but it looks like everybody might be getting back.
Yeah, it looks like everyone's back. Looks like we have 18 people and that's what we had before. So yeah, we're good.
Okay, great. So, um, Luke, when you're ready, you can start to share, um, the, the screen again and we'll go to our next slide. I would like to say to my principals, um, and everyone so far, I, I feel as if we're having, um, great information shared. Thank you. All right. And Mr. Howard was correct, we are going to, um, talk about some of those things that he wanted us to reflect on. And Mrs. Mallory is going to, um, start talking about vaccinations.
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, first off, I just want to say, um, just congratulations again to Nate. I've been praying for your family. And, um, Ms. Bozeman, we'll talk later about you putting my baby on Front Street. So, um, in regards to, um, COVID vaccinations, so as you may already know, Public Health, um, Dayton, Montgomery County has begun holding Public Health, um, Dayton and Montgomery County has begun holding vaccine clinics, um, for COVID-19 Moderna vaccines. And that first population to be vaccinated is, um, the Phase One group. And that includes, um, school nurses, clinic aides, um, and other individuals that are, um, on the staff that are responsible for fulfilling some of those duties, um, when the nurses or the clinic aides are absent. And so those vaccinations began around Monday, the twenty-eighth, uh, I'm sorry, December twenty-eighth. And they will continue, um, through Saturday, January thirtieth. And they're holding those clinics, I believe, at the Dayton Convention Center. And so we were asked to report the number of individuals, um, on our staff that would possibly fall into that Phase One population. And so we did submit eight to ten, um, names and, um, numbers of individuals. And again, that's our school nurse, clinic aides, and, um, most often times in our buildings, our, um, school secretaries and clericals are the individuals that support those, um, individuals when they are absent. So, um, we are still, um, waiting to hear, um, back. We have not asked them to let us know if they have taken the vaccination, and we have not mandated that they take it, but all of them are aware of those dates and have received that information. School staff are in Section 1B, which starts around February the first. Um, and as of yesterday, um, the governor has stated that, you know, that schools that have a plan to return to school, either full-time or blended by March first, um, will be the staff that are allowed to be first on that tier. And, you know, when they say school staff fall into 1B, you know, that's school staff across the state of Ohio. And so I know they have a timeline of when they hope everyone will be vaccinated or numbers will be, um, vaccinated. Um, and then, of course, there's, um, they've asked districts to sign a commitment letter as well, so they can kind of tier those school districts that plan on returning.
And, um, I, I would just like to add here that, um, with January eighteenth being that deadline for, um, getting in your commitment letter, our decision-making today is imperative because we are at January ninth right now. So this is perfect timing for us to have this conversation. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes. Um, what's in the commitment letter? Like, what does that language say?
Um, the commitment letter, they're asking us to say that we will return either hybrid or, um, full-time by March first. So you have to make a commitment to do that. Um, to me, what, what gives a little bit of, um, opportunity there is, um, hybrid looks a lot of different ways, and they have not defined what hybrid means. So, you know, as we started a slower roll-in in October, we had some students who were already in. Um, and then we brought, we did, went to the two-days-in and three-days-remote. Um, all of that classified as hybrid. Um, schools across Montgomery County do that a lot of different ways. So it doesn't have to be that all of your students are coming in every day, all day.
And just so I, thank you. And just so I feel a little bit better, the commitment letter is only about the return to school. It has nothing to do with whether or not someone chooses or doesn't choose to be vaccinated, correct?
You know, that's an interesting and tricky question because, yes, not that I can see, but I do know that it's been reported on the news, and, um, it has been said that, um, it, it would be tied to, there's some, I guess the governor at some point said in a news story that it would be tied to the number of staff members who chose to take the vaccination. And, and that is very, um, you know, frustrating because we can't mandate that. It is an individual decision for people to make that decision. So I'm sure we will be getting some clarity on that, and that is what I'm being told from Montgomery County ESC, that, um, there will be more clarity on that because that's, that piece is really out of our control, and it's not in the language of the commitment letter, but I know it has been mentioned.
Would you mind sending me a copy of the commitment letter? I'd just like to read it.
No problem. I'll forward you that email.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Okay, then let's move on to our next slide. Thank you, Tracy. Mrs. Mallory, sorry.
Good morning, everyone. Um, with the governor's push to get our students back to face-to-face instruction, the Ohio Department of Education has updated their quarantine rules, and they have said that this only applies to schools. So as long as the school district has a plan in place for COVID-19 in terms of what our safety is what would allow someone to not have to quarantine. So close contact with a person who has COVID that occurs in the school building or on the school bus will not result in quarantine if the following conditions are met: that the school has a documented COVID-19 prevention procedure, that the exposure occurred within a classroom environment or while on required transportation, that the individual who either was in close contact or who had COVID was wearing a face mask with the nose and mouth covered at all times, and that social distancing of at least six feet was maintained. And so as long as those conditions and criteria are met, they are now saying that individuals in schools do not have to quarantine, but that the regular quarantine procedures apply to any other settings outside of school. And then, um, if you could go to the next slide, please. The Ohio Department of Health has updated a new symptoms list. So on the left is what the previous list was, and if you had any of those, um, symptoms, they were recommending that you quarantine or stay home. The new list on the right says that if you meet either Criteria One and Three or Criteria Two and Three. Criteria One is that you have at least two of the following symptoms: a fever, chills, rigors, Malaysia, headaches, sore throat, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue, congestion, or a runny nose, or one of the following: cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new olfactory disorder, or taste disorder. Or if you have a severe respiratory illness with at least one of the following, um, clinical or radiologic evidence of pneumonia or acute respiratory distress, and you have no alternative more likely diagnosis. So you either need to meet Criteria One, where you have at least two of the ones, um, group of symptoms or one of the other, or Criteria Two and Three, where there's not another diagnosis that they could, um, give you for the conditions and the symptoms that you are experiencing. And so we are waiting for, um, further direction from Montgomery County Public Health before we update our information as it pertains to the symptoms, because this list did just come out from the Ohio Department of Health, but the, um, county public health departments are assessing that information before the schools move forward with changing what we disseminate to our staff and students.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you. Does anyone have questions about either of those two slides? Okay, Luke, could you put the first slide back just briefly? No, I meant the, the first one that Dr. Davis spoke to. Thank you. That's it right there. Um, okay, so, um, we talked about this, and I think what, the question that I have, and, um, I have to get an answer to that. I have to find, you know, the health department or someone to answer this question. Will we still have to do our reporting, um, in the same way? So if we don't have to do the close contact tracing, because if the students are in the classroom and that's where they're saying the, the contact happened, and, um, and so they don't get notified, parent, do parents, that's my question. Do we notify parents? Do we notify people that in fact there was close contact even though we don't quarantine? Dr. Davis, you may have.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, we are going to continue with our notification. They have not changed that requirement to date. And that's why I said we're waiting for updated information from Public Health to see if any of the things that we're currently doing need to change. And so if they meet all of those criteria, then they don't have to quarantine. But right now, all of the school districts are still reporting it the same way in terms of posting on the website and sending out the notification.
Okay, and I just think as a parent, that would be important for me to know.
Absolutely. And then if they didn't meet those criteria, so let's say that the individual was in the classroom, but they didn't have their face mask on, or they did not maintain a six-feet distance for greater than fifteen minutes, that person would have to quarantine. So if not one or the other, all of those criteria have to be met in order for there not to be the quarantine.
Okay, so instead of sending home a whole class, it's possible two or three students may be sent home because they weren't following one of these.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that clarity. Anybody else?
Oh, gosh, that doesn't, um, surprise me because there are some districts that were already doing that. Um, they didn't send the whole class home. They didn't send all the staff home. Um, they were very deliberate in how they, um, basically how they determine, um, the contacts along the lines of, you know, um, one district told me that, um, well, this was board members. If there was a student who had been exposed and, um, had tested positive, they would send the student to his left and right, um, home for quarantine, but not the student in the front or back. I, I don't, I don't understand, all right? But, yeah, everybody had a different way that they interpreted these things, okay? And then a contact to a contact, that didn't count in a lot of districts. So that would mean if, for instance, if, you know, I had been, uh, in contact with someone, and then I came to work and they were in contact with me, those people don't count. They're like second and removed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I, I think you're exactly right. I have heard people doing, um, interpreting it, we will say it that way, in different ways. And, and so you did find that there were some districts, um, you know, not sending home as many, um, students and staff.
Yeah, um, I did have a question, though. Um, and, and just remind me, because I think you did share this with us at one of our, um, meetings. But for quarantine, when our staff goes out for the, it's fourteen days or ten? They have now changed it to ten. Um, if they are going to get a test and they have a negative result, they can come back earlier than that. But if they do not get tested, it's ten to ten days instead of fourteen. And then if they go out for the quarantine period, is it required that they have a negative result, another test that says negative before they come back? Unfortunately not. That's never been in the regulations. So, um, staff or students could come back at any time. There was, we were not allowed to ask for any documentation saying that they now had a negative test. Okay, and, um, with that, is it that our staff gets a fourteen-day COVID, uh, compensation when they are out on quarantine? Um, no longer do they. Um, there was the, I think that's what Mr. Howard touched on briefly, when he said in his, um, reflection notes, that the, um, Families First Coronavirus Act, the FFCRA, expired on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty, and the new administration has not put anything in place. What that allowed for was for up to eighty hours or ten days of pay, um, for someone who has to be quarantined, either if they tested positive or if they were in close contact with someone. It also allowed for expanded, um, FMLA, where if an individual's, um, child was home from school because their school was closed, it allowed for them to receive two-year pay for a certain amount of days as well. That is completely gone right now, and so we are hopeful that the new administration, once they, um, come into office on the twentieth, that they will put something else in place. There was a new relief act, but it doesn't apply to schools due to you having to apply for a tax credit, and we're not eligible for it. But so right now, that, um, is all gone. However, they have said that if they do re-implement it, that if you've already used some time, that you do not, um, start over. So they gave you a total of ten days or fourteen days if you were quarantined, if you got COVID. So you do not get another fourteen days because it's now twenty-one. You used your fourteen days before, then you come back, you're gonna have to use your personal time, particularly opposed to the free days from the government.
Um, we would have an opportunity to, um, speak with our, um, attorney, um, and she wants us to hold off on, on having this particular discussion because there's a lot of information coming in. But we will, um, at some point have to address it, and it will come before the board, you know, whatever it is we decide to do. So, um, yes, but thank you for that date.
Thank you, um, for the, for the information, Dr. Davis. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, if we could move to the, yeah, there we are. Um, remote learning update from, um, Ms. Minor. She teased you all at our board meeting on Thursday, and she's gonna give you some more information now.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby, and, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share this information. As I mentioned, on Thursday, we did have a survey out all week to our teachers to have really find out from them firsthand how they felt about virtual learning. And we also had questions, the same questions related to the hybrid model, uh, since we had opened up the schools. And I just wanna refresh everyone's memory that when we went out for COVID back in March, our goal from our department and support staff was to provide as much high-quality professional learning as we could with the goal of increasing teachers' instructional skills, whether they're in the classroom, face-to-face, as we're all looking forward to, or remote. We wanted to enhance their Twenty-First Century Learning. So the instructional model that we selected, that they've been working on since the summer, is one that is interchangeable. And so the first, uh, couple of questions about the survey was, how do you feel your students are performing with the one-hundred percent, uh, remote learning? And how do you feel as an educator? And all the buildings, the, uh, there were options such as students are struggling, students are learning on a limited basis, the first two. Uh, the third option was students are completing assignments but need more support. And the final two were students are adjusting well and making progress, and student or students are learning at high levels. So the last two, where there, most of the buildings, there, we ranked between sixty and seventy percent of the schools ranked either Option Four or Five, meaning I feel they're adjusting well and performing or at high levels. And so, um, with that, we asked the same question about the hybrid. Um, and we also asked teachers, what were the challenges? What were the successes? And so it was a little lower, maybe between sixty-five and, um, maybe sixty and sixty-five percent with the hybrid. They said a big challenge was when we had to go on quarantine and kids coming and going. It was really challenging for teachers because you can imagine they had multiple plans, one for the kids face-to-face, those that were at home. Then they had kids going and coming from quarantine. In some cases, the teachers were being quarantined, and so they expressed those challenges. We also asked a final question and wanted their comments on, um, what, what can we do to support students more? What can we do to support them more? And as I mentioned, we have been providing training since the summer. And even when school started, almost every Friday, we've had some kind of training. So the teachers overwhelmingly, most of them said they felt the training was great. They have enough tools and resources, and they really need more time to plan and to, uh, collaborate in order to continue to, to develop those, uh, lessons that are meaningful. Um, some of the comments that I'd like to read, and, and we had many, so I can share them on paper if people would like to see them, is, um, I feel like it's really hard when students continue to switch back and forth. That's related to that hybrid model. They get used to the learning one way, and then it changes. Um, giving some more time to their social-emotional with students appears to be essential to support their learning. And we know there's a lot of things, and we've heard about a lot of the social-emotional, um, uh, supports that are there right now that we're using. We also had a teacher that said if we go hybrid, use the third party or have, uh, teacher support, the one-hundred percent remote, and then those teachers face-to-face. Um, especially at the early grades, it was a, a challenge. And again, the diff, most difficult Um, and again, the diff- most difficult stru- struggle was the hybrid. Um, I felt like, one teacher says, I felt like I was totally running in circles, not accomplishing much during hybrid. I feel like my students and the teachers I work with, that the students are learning so much more doing virtual. And I think that's just from the challenge. Again, our goal was to make sure the teachers had all the tools they needed. And I think the scheduling is something that we definitely would need to work on. Uh, going to hybrid to make sure everyone can feel like they're a success, i- if that's the route we took. Um, we had another um teacher respond and said they got a whole lot of tools and need more time to work on them. Again, a message that I read uh from Thursday, one of the strongest was, I've been thriving this year, and honestly, I feel I am doing some of my best teaching of my career. I've learned so many helpful new tools for teaching this year. I really appreciate the P D. Um, and she'd like to continue the P D of some of the options. Some new um uh comments we got was we've been provided really good tools and applications. I don't really need more support. A teacher says, I'm really anxious about coming back full-time because she's in a high-risk category. Um, again, uh, teachers were asking for more wellness checks. Some of them were saying, as far as helping students, less assignments and more time to do the assignments, restructuring the work. Um, overall, uh, the teachers have done very well making the adjustments. We know that if we, whichever way we come back at the beginning, uh, we'll need to make sure that it's really tight, and I think some of the less restrictions on the quarantines will help. Uh, consistency is gonna be the key, uh, but teachers are doing extremely well. We're excited about um what they're, they have learned and know that their teaching will be stronger as far as twenty-first century level when they return, because we wanted our kids to not only use a computer, but use the technology as part of their learning so that they're engaged in the work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ms. Minor. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Just more of a comment, I guess. I thought it was interesting um that what the survey came up with really echoes um what I'm going through right now with my work. Um, of course, I teach from home as well. And we have, you know, just like our teachers have since March. And what we thought was that the best way to go would be what we call remote, which is what we do, what we're doing right now. So I'm I'm at home and I would teach, you know, my students via Zoom. And I really, I enjoy it. It's fine for me. And I've I've taught online for many years. But based on the surveys, our students prefer, and a lot of teachers prefer, face-to-face first. They prefer completely online second.
Right.
They prefer remote or hybrid third, just kind of like what you said, like remote is like the least preferred. But then uh prior to COVID, the research indicated that hybrid was like the best way to go. So it's it's kind of like that research versus real life. Like the research, hybrid is the, hybrid is the best. But in practice, people don't really want that, you know, either want to be face-to-face or just give me online altogether. You know, so it's interesting that it's kind of bounced off of it.
Yeah. But the one thing we were hoping, and and we are seeing it, is teachers increasing, improving their technology skills, um designing lessons in a different manner, being more confident with that. Um, and the feedback shows that. So when we do come back full, we definitely don't intend for education to look the same with the traditional, maybe just worksheet, answer the questions at the end of the chapter work, but more uh engaging, creative lessons for students to be engaged.
What, what is the uh instructional framework for teachers that are teaching remotely, online? So do we have like a policy or process that there's thirty-five minutes of in-class instruction where you are asking questions? Like if they are vocabulary, are we covering it? And are we, are we just going on and giving the assignments and say, these are your assignments and I'm available until twelve thirty if you have questions?
I'm glad you asked that question. Um, that is not what should be happening as far as teachers just putting an assignment out there, kids do it and let me know if you have questions. It is a structured instructional framework model that all of the teachers have and were trained on. Um, one thing we know we have to do is gi- give more targeted feedback to teachers. So second, our first semester goal was to give teachers an opportunity to learn it and to start to practice the technology, um, kids getting on and off and getting comfortable with that. Second semester, every week, the superintendent, um, members of our curriculum and support team and principals will be actually visiting or um observing the online classrooms to see the model, to see and verify the model has been shared. So what should we see? We should see the teachers introduce the lesson, and it's called Learn About It on the playlist. You can um read it on your teacher, your child, or grandchild's playlist. And that's a daily check-in where they're talking about the learning target, what is the focus for the lesson for the week? What are the ICAN statements? And going over that in detail. There's another structured uh uh section of their framework. The next one is called Practice It. And that's where you you've heard uh some of the principals talk about multiple ways for students to learn and different activities. Uh, they've mentioned some of the tools like Paradek where the kids are interactive, an interactive model online. Um, the prac- practicing many ways to reach that target, that learning target. Then the final section of the framework is evidence. And the evidence is just what it says, evidence that you know what you know. I know we've, we've, we've realized, and we've got a lot of feedback, that in some cases, a lot of classes or students have been kind of, there've been too many assignments. Uh, the instructional framework says no more than one or two for the practice it, no more than one or two for the assessment. So we know there's some work to do and follow-up and accountability to make sure they're following it. And so that evidence section are the multiple ways for them to demonstrate that they know that learning target. And so that's what it should be. So if there's, there, and I'm sure there are teachers that may have the playlist or landing pages set up as we needed them to do, but they may still be teaching in that traditional manner, which is not what we want. And that would be, here are the assignments, do it, let me know if you have questions.
That there, so we just need to make sure that we're checking on um, a- and I heard you say that that is the plan, that you and Dr. Cosby and the principals will be doing check-ins to see uh if there are any teachers that need additional support or anything. And it's not even maybe needing additional support. It is just um just some fine-tuning maybe. But the homework, I think Mr. Warner hit it right on the point this morning, when he said that there are parents that are working all day, they come home, they're not familiar with all of the CAMI, the Paradek, and all of these other programs. But the student has six assignments to do in one class or in two classes for one week. Is that reasonable? And 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 when they also have five assignments in two other classes, so that's eleven assignments, you know, for the, for a parent that is working all day, not familiar with the tools and the software that they need to even answer those questions in some cases.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And so we're at the point, you know, instruction, assessment, we know the best practices for high-performing districts, and accountability is a big one. And so it's one thing to have a plan. It's another thing to make sure that we're one hundred percent following the plan. And you're right, it, and I would say there are teachers that uh that we need follow-up, and we need to make sure they're clear on what the expectation is.
Um, I will say, I think once the notification went out to staff that we would be coming into the classrooms, I shared with Lisa yesterday, I've gotten so many invites, it's just like killing my email. She's gonna show me how to fix that. I am, I am glad and I'm excited that the staff um, you know, understand that they will have people dropping in and and assessing what they're doing and then offering feedback. So um, I think that is gonna be a a good addition to what we're doing.
Yeah. And so one thing, we're looking for best practices as well. We know we're looking for that accountability piece to make sure all students are getting the quality instruction and lessons that uh they deserve. But we know there's some instructional stars out there going above and beyond, and we'd love to be up. We know there's a recognition plan, and we'll definitely have ways to recognize those uh best practices that we see. So we're looking, you know, it's, it's not only looking for teachers not on track, which we know in any organization will find something like that, but we're also seeking those that are going above and beyond, where we can share some best prac- practices and new ways to collaborate for the teachers.
Mm-hmm. A- and I want to say that overall, you know, the the teaching staff, I think have really stepped up and they're doing an awesome job in engaging the students and uh adapting to the different platforms. And I know there was another one introduced last week, and the teacher is like, okay, uh, we've got a new platform, you have to use these tools to answer the questions. So we just have to be a little mindful too, in that the different software and tools that we're putting there for the teachers, is it too much? And um even the expectation for the students, you're going from Paradek, and the latest one introduced was CAMI, and it has all of these different, you know, objects that that you have to use. You have to use the circle or square, a draw, uh, and it's just to be mindful of what you're asking the students to do. When we talk about what we want them to know and how we want them to present the information that they know, do we need them to go through all of that, or is there a simpler way for them to just answer the question? Because the time for some of them to figure out how to even get to use those tools to answer the question, and they could have already answered the question. So that was your last comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I I know we've, we've discussed a lot so far, and we're still discussing returning in to in-person learning. Did I miss something? Or so, Dr. Cosby, are we, what, what is the plan? I mean, have we gotten to that yet?
I wanted to.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I just, I thought we were talking about so many things. I don't know what we're doing now. I mean, I I mean, are we, are we going, I know that we initially said we were going back in after MLK Day hybrid. So now with the information on the vaccine from the government, starting with the schools and and going from there, what is the plan to go back in-person a hundred percent, given now there's some sort of remedy? I mean, I'm sorry, I just, there's so much.
Hey, um, this is, slide, the next slide, I'll go. I wanted to make sure that when we're having this discussion, that as much information is out there as possible so that we can have, you know, good conversation. So this, I'm just gonna go through quickly, the considerations that we're taking into account now, the district numbers that Marlon shared. Um, of course, when we talk about the vaccine, we have no way of knowing how many staff members will take it, and we, we cannot mandate that. Um, remember that the vaccine will not stop someone from getting COVID. It will make that person not get as sick. Um, studies continue for further impact. Change in quarantine rule will allow more staff and students to stay in school, which is a great thing. But fear of not quarantining those who have done close contact may keep some of their families from sending their students to school. So I wanted you to hear the staff responses, and that was the final thing which Lisa just shared. I'm gonna move to the next one, which is the plan that I am going to propose. And again, I wanted you to have information to um be able to respond back. We are asked to sign up by January eighteenth to return hybrid on March first. Um, I would like to sign that paper. And that would allow our staff to receive the vaccination in preparation for our return. On March first, we start our hybrid plan by having the students who require special therapy, such as P T O T speech, um, and and other um things. And we would develop that list, could start returning in. And this could be across um K twelve. It would not be just focused on the early buildings. This would allow students to get that support they need, which is very difficult sometimes to deliver remotely. And I I'll explain to you why we've sort of moved this down a little bit. And one thing, the governor is saying that he would like for these hybrid plans to start on March first, not January nineteenth, but to start on March first. Um, on March fifteenth, we start our fourth quarter. That's when we would like to start our hybrid plan. It would be similar to the plan that we had in October, two days in-school, three days virtual. And um that would give us two weeks before spring break to monitor how school is going. Now, I do um want you to know that a piece of what we would be doing also from March first to March fifteenth, when we make that decision, and actually we'll start doing it now based on our decision, if we decide that we will follow this plan, then um we would start working right now on what that schedule would look like. Would we have um some staff members, and this would require conversation with um T M E A, um, but some staff members who um are focused solely on the students who choose to remain at home and other teachers who then would work with those students who choose to come back in? Because what we found is that doing hybrid for the teacher is the hardest thing to do. Um, we would continue to monitor to student progress, making adjustments if needed. If we can maintain our staff and students in the building, and by that I mean, we're, we're not quarantining as many, because that is truly why we stopped the blended. We stopped it because there were no students in the building. There were two or three in a class, if that. Um, parents pulled their kids and and and, you know, took them back home. So if we can maintain our staff and students in the buildings, we can continue the hybrid model for fourth quarter. If not, we can return to all virtual learning for the remainder of the year. So my ask for you is that we sign that form. Um, March first, we begin our hybrid plan as asked by the governor. And then on March fifteenth, when we move into fourth quarter, so there's not a change for this quarter for staff and students, then we go into our full hybrid plan with all students having the opportunity, you know, to come back to school for two days and do three days that are virtual. Um, and and we just continue to monitor at that point.
President Bozeman, may I make a statement? So why is this the recommendation versus going back one hundred percent? Because looking at this, it seems like you don't want to go back one hundred percent this year at all.
Um, my concern about going back one hundred percent is, for one thing, we don't know. Um, well, our numbers haven't gotten better. The numbers across the state have have gotten worse. Our numbers are down, but we're higher than most other um districts, and even in Montgomery County. And we have, our parents have shown us that if people are getting COVID, which they are, they um, you know, they're leaving. And we do still have to be able to, you know, um, do the social distancing, as was just mentioned. And and those things are hard to deliver. Um, the number of teachers who will take the vaccination, we have no way of knowing that. If we go back a hundred percent, we are mandating all teachers return, which is what we're doing even when we go hybrid, because we're saying you have to be prepared to work with students who are in the building. But I think it is a difference for preparation for two days versus um preparing, you know, for the five. So, right, we don't have a plan at this point. We'd like to start the um fall all-in would be wonderful, but that's where we are right now.
So if the plan is to go back um blended, why are we waiting until March first?
We're hoping that a lot of our staff members will um take up the opportunity to vaccinate it. And if we are, if we start vaccinations January eighteenth, you get the second shot, um, two. And if we, if we start a vaccination January 18th, you get the second shot two weeks after that. And so then our quarter ends on March 15th, which would then allow people to have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, get the second vaccination, and we'll start fourth quarter. Everything, we would have a, a quarter that we would be in.
Right. But if, if we can't mandate staff and teachers to take the vaccine and we have no way of knowing who takes the vaccine, then what difference does it make if we start on March 1st or February 1st? I, I don't understand.
Well, we will have to ask teachers because they have to know the number of vaccinations to prepare. So we will have an idea of the number of people who will be getting the vaccination.
I, I just need to let everybody know where I stand. These kids need to go back to school. They need to go back to school 100%. The numbers that Mr. Howard shared with us um, a few moments ago, um, based on that information and that data, we already know that the infection rate for our area is low. We're talking about 5% overall of the population of Trotwood in regards to the numbers that Mr. Howard just gave. Don't reflect that there is any mass danger with sending these students back to school. I think to continue to wait to send these kids back is just doing more detrimental damage to their social and emotional wellbeing. And so if, if, if it, if, if my opinion matters at all, um, I think these kids need to go back to school 100% and I think they need to go back as soon as possible.
As you know, I appreciate your opinion. I appreciate you sharing your opinion. Um, I would like to say that, you know, for some of our students being in school is not the best thing for them socially, emotionally. We're working strongly on making that happen. We are working on making this a, um, safe place for students to be. But as you know, even prior to all of this happening, this was work that needed to be done. So I do want our students to come back. Um, I think face-to-face is important, but I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we do. Now please have other people weigh in. Um, this is why we're having a discussion. This is why we have information.
Do you, what do you think? I think last time what we talked about, or if I'm wrong, please correct me. One of the problems I thought was that parents weren't sending the kids back. And it wasn't necessarily because of the teachers not being there, it was because of their fear of just COVID in general, just kind of like what they saw on the news or, or whatever. So what do we think will be different this time? You know, if we go back to exactly what we're, what we were doing and parents are still watching the news and they still see the numbers surging, why would we think they would send them back March 1st?
Well, I think the vaccination may make a difference. I mean, I think that they may feel like this is the thing because that is the hope that's been sort of passed on, you know, um, when you watch TV, that is the hope. So that's something that is different. It's like an end to this. I mean, I, I know for me personally, I vacillate between will I take it or won't I take it? And so I'm sure, you know, that a lot of people feel that way. You know, do we trust it? Our community sometimes doesn't feel the same way as, as other populations in regards to that. But I do know that for me, it does give me hope that if, if I were to decide to take it, I may get sick, but I won't potentially die. So I think that's one thing that is different. The conversation around COVID in general has changed. And to be quite honest with you, I think that people are somewhat looking forward to, um, what may come out of this new administration, um, as far up as, as the president and, and what things are put in place. So I think that there is a level of hope and support. And, you know, we could, as I said, we continue to monitor this progress. We could have those first two weeks and all the kids are coming back and you can tell that excitement. Everybody is wanting to do that. And so the possibility of coming back all in is not totally out, but I've been asked to set a situation for what we're going to do, not to say that it could not be changed. Just like I said, we may have to go back all remote. If things are different and, and all of our staff and, you know, feel confident that I'm in here and I'm safe. Because you're right, Ms. Bozeman, I do believe that's why parents were pulling the kids. They were quarantining. And to them that meant, oh, something is happening. That's not good. That's not positive. I'm going to keep my child home. I do think there is a fear of COVID. But I think that that's being alleviated by this opportunity to take vaccination.
And I, I appreciate and I like that you're saying this is not the end-all be-all. If we find that most of the teachers get vaccinated and we see that things are going well, then perhaps we can all come back. Or if it goes the other direction, then we may have to go all back remote, you know, or online, whatever you want to, you know, define it as. So just, you know, we'll just continue to monitor the situation and as long as parents maybe understand that and as long as we understand that, that puts us in the
And, and I do think, you know, kids are going to talk to their parents. They're going to be excited about being back. You know, or not too. I, I think we will hear from them and we will make a point of hearing from them.
I, I also want to just kind of put out there, parents weren't only removing their children because they were scared of COVID. They were removing their children to put them in places that would serve the needs that they had. Cause I'm one of those parents. So I want to make sure that while, while we, you know, we had that conversation around parents being scared and rightfully so, that we look at both ends of that spectrum. They weren't just taking them out because they were afraid. They were taking them out because it was unrealistic for their lifestyles.
I have a comment as well. If the governor hadn't made the announcement and if the vaccine was not ready, like it hadn't been up until now, I know we had a solid plan. And one thing that this district is known for is being very proactive in what we do. Not just, you know, these are just recommendations. They are just, you know, what others may or may not be doing. But I'm just curious what the thought process is behind not sticking with the original plan and still moving forward with sending in the information to the governor's office as well as making sure that the teachers that are the staff that want to be vaccinated, be vaccinated. And I say that because time is of the essence for our students. And one thing that we decided when we took the break was after MLK Day, we would come back to our hybrid model.
I think we've always said that we would continue to monitor the situation and to be quite frank, the way things were going, I think we would have been more inclined to remain remote had it not been for that opportunity of the vaccination, because our numbers, again, even though they're holding steady, our numbers have been high. I mean, comparatively speaking for what else is going on. And, and so it's hard to know, you know, again, I thought that was a piece of what we've always said we would do. And that is what we do and we're supposed to do as we continue to do this continuous improvement model that we have, is to always reflect on what has happened and then to make adjustments as needed. So, I know we had said that that would have been the first opportunity that we would consider coming back. But even the governor has said that March 1st is the date that he expects, you know, people who want to get the vaccination to be back either hybrid or all-in.
Yeah. And, um, and you know, and I, I understand that. Um, but one thing I do know is that in, in our world and in the healthcare world, things are not grave as grave. Yes, there's a new variant strain. We have learned to some extent to live with this virus since March and take the necessary precautions. If you recall, there were people in the beginning, they didn't want to, they didn't believe in masks. And they didn't want to wear the mask. They didn't believe in the social distancing. And so they didn't do so. A lot of the things that initially were recommended, people did not want to do. However, over the last, I don't know, nine, 10 months, what I have seen, and I appreciate having the numbers and showing that really our zip code is only 5% uh, based on our total population of 25,000, which is relatively low compared to where it was in the beginning. So I'm just asking, you know, like I said, I know that, um, we've talked about monitoring, we've talked about, you know, looking at where we are as a district. Again, what happens if 85% of your staff decide they don't want the vaccine? I mean, realistically, and I say that because it's happening in organizations. People are not wanting to be at the front of the line for that. For one reason or another. And so if that is indeed the case, you know, and, and what I'm trying to do is keep kids first. And if we keep kids first in how we educate them, then we have to look at strategies to accommodate that. So I'm, I'm asking you, you know, because it's optional. It's optional in the healthcare world, somewhat optional, but really mandatory. How do we deal with that?
Um, I, I do want us to remember, you know, when we look at what is happening, there really is a spike in cases. I mean, every day more cases are, are, are happening. They're doubling. Things are bad. I mean, it's, it's interesting. It's because we've gotten to the point that we're normalizing the fact that the number of people who are dying is increasing. We're normalizing that. Okay. So we had um, holiday break and, and we know that it's going to spike after, which it has. After each of these holidays, there's been a spike in the numbers. So I, so to say that people are really taking this to heart and holding and doing these precautions, everybody is not. So I do think the fear is still out there. I do think the, the, um, COVID, as we know, is still out there right now. And again, the, the best hope has just come from this idea of the opportunity to be vaccinated. I, I don't want us to sort of get off understanding that even though our numbers are, you know, steady, they're high and they're much higher than they've ever been. So I, I wonder, like you said, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not saying what you're saying. No, I'm just saying, you know, being forward-thinking because that's what we have to do as a district. And I know that's what we do in healthcare. I mean, our, our healthcare providers, you know, we, you know, there's work that has to be done. And honestly, I believe this whole thing is a mess. Probably because we didn't have, you know, the strong leadership just to shed everything and do what we needed to do like other countries and some of the, you know, and places have done to mandate things. And, you know, everybody hates the word mandate, mandatory. Uh, but when in crisis, like you say, and we are still in crisis, all right? Um, it's necessary to do certain things. I mean, even you said everybody's not locking down and, and you're right. I mean, it is case by case and that's how it's going to be with this vaccine. Not everybody is going to opt to have it. And so I, I'm just curious what that means for us as a district and what that looks like moving forward. Because we'll, we'll have to make those hard decisions at some point regardless. And all districts are having to do that. The ones that are in-person, because there are districts that are in-person, you know, okay? And, and there, and, and then there are some that are 100% virtual. And then there are, you know, districts like us that are in-between and what we want to gradually transition to. So I'm going to be a pray and talk about it. That's what I'm saying.
I don't know if I'm talking about it at all. What our parents, um, basically said to us when we tried in October to come back, you know, hybrid was that they pulled their kids for whatever reason, whether it's like Mr. Scare's to, to find a place that met their needs, or whether they were trying to protect their children from, you know, what they feel is, is something that could potentially be dire, if not to the students, to the families at home. Um, I think that, as I said, for me, the thing that's different when I was asked that question was this hope of what would the vaccination do? I don't know yet because since we haven't signed that form, we haven't been given the document where we will have to say, you know, we'll have to ask staff, how many of you would like to take it at that point? We will have some information. Our, our students, from what the principals are saying, what, um, Ms. Minor is finding, they are doing relatively well with this. I mean, I think that if, if they were all in and this was last year and you were having the same conversation without COVID, not last year, but prior to March, um, how our students were doing, you're still going to have those that are not coming to school, not just not signing on, but not coming to school, who are not, um, necessarily moving along as fast as we want. So the types of things that we have to work on are instruction and what curriculum are we, um, having with our kids and all these same things, engagement to get them to school. Um, when we started with parent engagers and, and those folks, it wasn't at that time about COVID. We've just been able to use them in that space. So for us, even if we were to bring our kids all back, I, I want us to understand that there's still a lot of work to do. That's not the magic, magic bullet for us. So right now to do that and to add on top of that, the concerns that come along with COVID, I, I really, I am not convinced that that, um, is what we would like to do. I do think that we should give the parents an opportunity to see what it would be like to have them back. So we start the hybrid and maybe we realize that enough people have taken the vaccination that maybe, you know, because of it in general, the, the information that we're going to see in here is going to get more positive. Again, I mentioned our new administration may put out some, some rules or some things that give us hope. And, and so we may say, you know what? We can go back. I, I personally just don't think we are there at this point.
And, and, um, what, when are we going to start pulling the staff?
Well, once I, if we're going to, if we're going to try hybrid versus hybrid or full, if we're going to try something other than full remote, then we have to sign up by January 18th. Once they get notification from school districts that plan to come back either hybrid or full, then they will start to give us the information that we need to get from our staff. So at that point, I will send out the document to the staff and say, um, would you let us know if you plan to take it? Because remember these vaccinations have to be frozen. I'm sure they don't want to send 100 and you only need 20 or send 20 and you really need 100 because they need time to be ready. So, um, so we will know after January 18th.
I guess, um, just to take a temperature gauge like we have done in the past and to take surveys, would it hurt to ask the staff what their thoughts are on taking the vaccine? I mean, even before, you know, we submit the paper and before they submit the paper, just so that we can get in front of the curve regardless, and just so that we have the information. And this is just for our information only on how our folks are, are feeling about this vaccine. I mean, is there any harm in doing that now?
Um, you know, I had spoken with the TMEA president and, um, right, there's no reason not to do it. I think that, um, she and I both sort of agreed that that both of us on a daily basis may make a different decision, but we can definitely ask people, where are you now? Where are you on a given day?
Yeah. Our, our company asked us about a month ago, they did a, a company-wide survey of over 2,000 employees and they said, hey, we know this vaccine's coming, because we all knew it was coming. What, where do you stand as an individual? Where do you stand on taking this vaccine? And why do you stand there? And what information would you need, uh, to know? If you were going to make that decision to have the vaccine? And so again, um, you know, just so that we can have our hands on the pulse, so that when we make the next decision, whether it's to go hybrid or stay virtual or go in-person, we already have an idea of the consensus of our team.
Yeah. And, and remember this would have to be, um, you know, we wouldn't get names or anything like that. So
Completely anonymous.
The people, how many, um, think they would do whatever. Yes, we can develop that type of information. I do think that when, um, it would be helpful to me if we could leave here today, um, with an understanding of what we're going to do. if we could leave here today um with an understanding of what we're going to do. And um because, because this is gonna move fast. I mean, I have, you sign up or you don't. If you don't sign, you're put at the end of, you know, end of the, you're getting the vaccine.
Yeah, I think signing up is essential. I mean, I I think that's a no brainer. I mean, because, you know, if we don't sign up, that means we're not on the list for the vaccines, right?
Right, but if we do sign up, then at minimum, we're going hybrid. So you had said, you know, we're going all remote or not. So we have a plan that says that at minimum, we're going hybrid. And again, you know, we can, based on our needs as a district or what we find as a district, if nobody's coming to school, I I would imagine they are not gonna say, well, we're gonna take that vaccine back.
Yeah, and that is why I said, maybe do.
Decision was best for us, whether we decide at some point to go full, go all back. But I think that I would like to um be able to move forward with signing and saying that plan is to go hybrid on March first.
Yeah, and I I agree. I agree with that. I'm sorry.
Hand up for that. You had your hand up, Mr. Andrews? He's had his hand up for a while.
Yeah, um. You know, we're going through a survey and things out, out, out at uh in my job as well. And um there, in just reading and looking and and trying to pay attention to what I'm seeing going on uh locally in in the nation, right now, they're saying that the average in terms of uh for the the percentage of people who are accepting the vaccine uh uh compared to those who is being offered is around forty percent nationwide. And I would imagine it'll be something similar here. Uh, but, you know, listening to everybody, um, I I too would like to see us do a survey of the staff to find out who is interested in getting it. And along with the survey, I I would hope that we would also put in some of the latest information about what the vaccine is is gonna be able to do, what its limitations are gonna be. And there have been some some uh pieces of information coming out uh uh trying to help people make that decision about whether or not it would be uh a good for them to take it at this time or not based on uh pre-existing conditions or pre-existing allergies and those kind of things. And I'm not sure if everybody is aware of all of those uh types of things that are going along with it. Um, also, um, I'm not sure which form of the vaccine is being uh offered because I I and I'm and I don't want to say because I'm not real clear on it at the moment myself, but I think one type has been shown to also be effective against this mutant strain that's starting to pop up in different parts of the country. And one may be a little less effective with that. And I think that would be a consideration as well. Um. You know, I I agree that the kids need to be back in school and they need to be back as soon as possible. But we do have to kind of proceed with caution because I think the X factory is gonna be um or my big concern about is is uh staffing. And are we gonna have the people uh that are gonna be coming back in in the numbers necessary to uh to do what what it is we we would like to see done? Um, hybrid, you know, it it works pretty good. I think my my reservation about that all the time has been it's kind of a disruptive schedule because you're in, then you're out, then you're in, then you're out. And I understand people get used to that. It's kind of rhythmic, but by the same time, I'm not sure how effective that would be, you know, on an ongoing basis. Um, so that's kind of, that's kind of where I am with 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 those things. Um, but I am kind of encouraged by the idea that we are being forced because of COVID to do a lot more with technology than maybe we should have been doing anyway. And uh so it's kind of helped us get a leg up and um just see where where it kind of goes. But my concern is a a detailed survey to see where everybody is and hopefully we'll get a uh sizable a number of uh uh teacher responses on time to make that commitment or not to the state.
So let me, what what I'm thinking about what you said, I I heard you and we can get that survey um to and add information on it about the vaccine. Um, I I do realize, and I want to remind you all, that just because someone chooses not to take the vaccine does not mean that they may not want to still come into a hybrid situation. So there are gonna be some teachers who'll say, I'm not gonna take it and we need to have another question, but will you still participate in a hybrid? Because there will be some people who'll say, yes, I will. So that's um, I I really feel positive that with the with the um understanding of the hybrid, with the new quarantine rules, if we can get our students to, you know, maintain the social distancing, wear their masks, wash their hands, do those things, then we won't be sending home our teachers and our students as much. So hybrid could end up being what we had hoped initially, you know, twenty percent of the students are virtual and eighty percent of them are coming to school. You know, it could be ninety-ten, it could be, because if we're gonna allow, you know, the students to come into the building and the parents want them to do that, we could have that, and that's what we had hoped for. It just ended up being, because of the quarantine rules, so few people who were in school. But I'm sure, we know, that's why they changed the quarantine rules. They only did that for um the schools. Because they knew the difficulty, as Mr. Andrews said, in going in and out, in and out. That's what the teachers don't like. But if we had a schedule and that schedule was working and those kids were coming in, it was a few kids who decided to remain out, I I think that would be would be great. And that's the type of monitoring I'm talking about. So when when asked what is different, really, that's what's different, the opportunity to um not have to quarantine as much and to have an option of taking a vaccine. I think that may be the thing that gets parents to send their students to school.
Um, so I've listened to everyone speak and um I was expecting that we were gonna try and go back on January nineteenth with the hybrid model. I'm still concerned, though, for parents. For the parents that have to continually make adjustments, for those students that are not in middle school and can't stay at home, for those parents with elementary students and they're not working at the base of somewhere where they work remotely at home as well. And I know that our um support staff are reaching out, but are we recording? Um, do we have a sense of what it is those parents need? So we went hybrid for a minute. And and what we have to make sure we're doing is assessing our uh pros and cons and our, you know, our high points, our low points, and the things we need to fix. So when we went hybrid, what was our numbers? At the beginning, maybe, what were they at the end? What were the things that we needed to work on when they went hybrid? Either with transportation, in-person learning, I I mean, the instruction, less students in the classroom, and the teacher trying to manage to. So we have to make sure that we had, we had a chance to do that. And we know what those pitfalls were. We were planning to come back January nineteenth. Families, including myself, were also planning that the students would be going back. So when I say there is real repercussions to families that then have to change their plans because they now have to be remote and teaching, and they're trying to teach and do homework and other things. So we need to look at, and and even our overall attendance. So what is our um our student population right now? Has it decreased like by two hundred, three hundred? All of those things are important for us to look at. And you're right, it's a different time. Parents have been going through this for a while now. And so I think um I don't know, will we lose additional students because we are staying remote? And again, a lot of the parents had a real problem because I think they were looking at it not as value to their students, but to themselves. So a lot of those parents probably need the mental health support and reassurance more than the students because they can't keep up. And and they're feeling overwhelmed with the number of assignments that when they come home from work, you know, my students got four assignments. Um, so are we checking, how how many? And I think some of the principals did give those numbers. I I think I heard Mr. McCray say quite a few home visits. But we need to be tracking the home visits, how many repetitive home visits to which students? So what are those high flyer students that have not been showing up? What are the supports we're giving them? So is it a, one of those high flyers students that's not showing up? Is it that the family needs something that we need to provide either within or from outside resources? So I I'm in favor of whichever plan we decide to go with, but we need to make sure we're taking care of, we're documenting what we're doing. We're taking care of um noting how many families we're contacting, how many students during this time, what I'm really interested in is how many of our students have been referred to the juvenile detention center or something as a result of this, you know, homeschooling and lack of social connections. Those are the things I'm more concerned about.
Okay.
And Miss Bozeman, not.
Yes.
If I can, this is, this will be the last thing I say. Um, because I feel like we're kind of, you know, going going in circles. I apologize, my battery died. I logged out there for a second. If I can speak as a parent um and not as a board member, I I don't know to me, and this is just my personal, how I feel personally. I have three small children. I have a fourth grader, I have a second grader, and I have a preschooler. I don't know if anybody else is in that type of predicament when you talk about homeschooling. It is not the ideal situation. And my fear is that we have parents out there that you know, thank God, we are fortunate enough, I'm fortunate enough to to own my own business and am able to set my own schedule, but it's still difficult. My wife gets off of work at six o'clock. I'm usually working all day. I take my son to preschool. I take my daughters to their grandmother's house, who is suffering from pre-existing conditions. And we put her in a a difficult situation because we can't afford the, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month it would cost us to send our children to daycare while they are out of school. I just want us to take into consideration the real issues that families of very small children are dealing with, that feel like they are ignored and their needs are not being met. We understand, and I don't by any means jeopardize the safety of our staff or our students, but there is another spectrum here that I just don't feel like we are giving enough credence to. And it's not that we use school as a childcare program, but this is an intricate part of day-to-day lives for families all across our city. And I just feel like those needs, as I was adamant about it before, are not being addressed. They just are not. My children go back to school. I was reluctant to pull them out of Troywood Madison City Schools, but it was just not realistic for what our family needed. Our children go back full-time, in-person, next, they go back on Monday. And I don't want us to have to lose more students simply because we don't have the wherewithal to do something that other districts and other private schools or charter schools are willing to do for families that 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 need it. And so, yeah, I'm adamant about our kids going back to, going back to school one hundred percent. I think it is absolutely essential that they do, but mostly it is because I know for a fact that there are families out there who cannot do this any longer. I sent my kids to the charter school I sent them to because I felt like I was failing as a parent because I could not adequately educate them. Even with, even with virtual learning. And if I feel like that, I thought, I I I feel like I'm a pretty smart individual. I can only imagine what other families are going through. I just want that aspect of this conversation to be acknowledged. And I want their voices and their concerns to be heard, because if they feel like I do, I just know they feel like it's not. And thank, thank you, Ms. President, Madam President. That's all I'll say.
Uh, can I, can I respond? Um, Mr. Scars, I am, I am hearing you. I've heard you before. Um, I think that maybe what we need to do for um, and and based on what we've seen our students do, and to be quite frank with you, I have my principals responding to me. Um, they don't feel that we're losing our students because they're not coming to school because we don't have that, not the majority of them anyway. Um, it's a small number. Um, but that's not to say that we can't work to address that. Um, it may be that we need to look at the possibility of using a third party, you know, person, because if you're taking your child out and they're going into um a situation such as a charter school, which may not be offering all the things that we do anyway, then maybe that opportunity, until we can get back safely for all students, maybe we look into getting a third party um person and and Ms. Allen can help me look at if we can use some of our um um S R money or some of this money that is coming to us to provide that. But I think what what would, what may have to be the understanding is that it would be difficult for me to say to some of my teachers that you have to um come in, you know, when, when that is not the recommendation, you know, you're gonna be with students all day, every day, five days. That would probably be a change in work environment. I I can only imagine, you know, um, what that might lead us to, but that's not to say that we can't um offer, we can work together as an administrative team, you know, all these people who are on here with me right now and try to find something that may satisfy that need for that population of of um students. And and I agree with you, it doesn't matter whether we're talking about, you know, ten or fifty. Um, we still can look to try to address that. So I will definitely work to do that. Um.
Dr. Cosby, I had a question noted earlier on the third party. I I'm not sure exactly what our purpose and cost and how a third party would work. Because one of the things we agreed to do as a board was to continue to pay each and every staff that we hired at the beginning of last year. So I I need to understand, being on the finance committee also, what would that cost be? And what would we be looking for them to do that we can't do internally already?
Well, what we, what we, okay, again, I'm just gonna tell you an idea off the top of my head and and so understand that that's all that is, that it it may be that um Janice or Lisa will jump in or somebody else and say, ah, we could never do anything like that. But um, we may be able to offer a space for this, you know, number of um families that, for our elementary, I mean, we could say that, you know, it's pre-K and maybe go up to, you know, our elementary level and that we could maybe have those and and depending on the number, I mean, we may be able to get staff members or um people who could teach, you know, certifications. Um, Ms. Minor, help me if I'm wrong, but maybe we could get one or two teachers or, you know, people who could work with these students and, you know, group them in a different way. So we wouldn't have to have the traditional pre-K, first grade, second grade, but in fact, if the teacher certification is pre-K three, then we could have a teacher who would work with those students and we could have one, you know, who would work with others. Um.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Together.
Yes, Dr. Cosby, you know, one option that we can consider and we we've talked about, I know I've talked about it with principals, when we did the hybrid, um, you know, hypothetically, if we could do it again, identify targeted teachers that service those remote students one hundred percent, and then have those teachers to service the ones coming in is another option, so that teachers aren't going back and forth, and then we can con- control the quality. So that teachers aren't going back and forth and then we can con- control the quality of instruction, knowing we're still, the parents really like the landing page and the setup that we have, but have certain teachers that are 100% serving those that choose to stay home or some things that we've discussed.
And I think that's one of the things that, uh, we discussed even earlier when we were talking about going remote. One of those concerns brought on by Mrs. Scares and was just what he said, how do we get those families that need the lower grades that need somewhere for their students to go? So even, um, a- and how are we handling that? So on that point, I, I think, I think I understand what you're saying and I think we're back to that initial thought at the beginning is how do we support those parents that, uh, can't afford fifteen hundred, a thousand dollars or whatever? And the six hundred dollar stimulus, I don't think even pays for those families that have those issues. It doesn't even pay that for them. And those that are working making minimum, it doesn't, you, you know. So that's why I just want to make sure we're tracking and we're asking those parents, what do you need? Outside of the school, how, what supports do you need? And then we work with partnerships, we work with whoever to make sure we get that done. Cause we have an awesome alumni that if they, you know, if we reach out to a class group and say, we need money that we're giving direct money to, or we're just writing a check to pay for childcare or for whatever for our students. That's what Ram Nation will take care of. So let's make sure we're doing that.
I have two hands, one Ms. Allen and then second Ms. Moore.
I, I was just going to say with, uh, board member Jeter Freeman's, um, question, or I think Superintendent Cosby. In terms of the, um, cost, that, what you're talking about in terms of repurposing teachers, that wouldn't necessarily be an additional cost. But I don't have the firm numbers, but there are some more monies, cares monies coming to districts and we'll know more about that probably another couple of weeks. So if there is any additional, um, costs to providing whatever we need, there is some, some money that is forthcoming. So I just wanted to say that and let everyone know that.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you, President Bozeman, and this will be my last comment as well. It, interesting enough, we, it sounds like we've already discussed this early on with how we support those families and, and did not come up with a concrete solution for that. So I'm glad to see that we are now investigating a way to support those families. In addition to that, um, unemployment also ended in December. So even when those parents that were at home and didn't have to go to work, well, now they gotta go to work and it's the, they can't be at home. So, you know, looking at all of the factors holistically, um, this is definitely something that I, I know that we are going to have to come up with some sort of solution. If we didn't see the attrition of losing our students then, we probably will see it now in moving forward. Thank you.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that the recommendation for the superintendent's return to in-person instruction be put up for a vote by the board at our next public meeting.
Going to cause, I'm, I'm sorry, I had to step out. I didn't, I got kicked off, so I had to come back in. Um, the only problem with that, um, was that he would sign, sign.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor before questioning.
Yeah, I, I would like to second that, but I do understand what Dr. Cosby is saying. Okay, so.
Okay, so the motion has been made and it has been seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
You have to be very mindful of the timing of making a decision because we may lose out on the opportunity to get vaccinated. We don't want to be at the end of the line. I had planned to actually send our Baron notice in right after this meeting because if they're going to line us up based on when they hear from us, we don't want to be at the end of that.
Look, Madam President, the motion that I made does not restrict the superintendent from, from doing that. She can still very much go ahead and send in, um, the documentation to the state in regards to what our plans are. I have simply asked that the recommendation that she has provided be put up for a vote by the Board of Education. That doesn't, that doesn't stop anything that she's done or anything that she is doing.
I guess the reason that's confusing is because the recommendation that she has up says that it includes the fact that she would turn in this form for vaccination. So it all, it is all included in the recommendation.
Right. She can still talk, she can still fill out the information. The only thing I'm asking for is that we vote on whether or not this is the recommendation that we would like to, that we would like to accept. We don't plan to implement any of this until March 1st. That is well beyond the time that our next public meeting would be held, even if we have to call a special meeting for it. So that doesn't, that doesn't restrict her from doing that. I, I would hope that she would continue to do that. Um, but I think this particular recommendation needs to be put up for a vote.
I think what I, I, as I'm reading this is, so Dr. Cosby, and the information you need to send back, do you have to give a date for when we would start back hybrid? And our next meeting would be after January 18th. So are you concerned that you would send in information before January 18th with a date to return that has not been approved by the board?
I just didn't want to send in information saying that we were going to, um, start hybrid and, you know, I, I had said I would like an opportunity to potentially, um, um, adjust this, um, recommendation a little, but my concern is that I don't want to say we're going to do one thing and then we end up doing another. You know, I guess that's my concern. I just.
I'm guessing you're not saying that this is your, this is a recommendation for discussion. You're not saying this is my exact plan. You're saying. Yes, Ms. Bozeman, after getting this information, I would like an opportunity to, um, speak with my team and sort of talk through a couple of things that have come up that I feel that we, um, want to attempt to address. And.
Didn't hear you.
You want the form to go in by the 18th?
Yes.
You're saying, I want that. But you're saying, here's what I'm thinking, here's the recommendation, let's talk about it. But this is not what I have in stone. This is not what's definitely going to happen. Let's toss it around and see.
And, and Madam President, that solidifies what I'm saying. I am not asking to vote on this. When she presents us with the official recommendation, even after she sends the information into the state in regards to what our plan is, that we vote on that recommendation, not what she's presented here today. So that does not, that does not prevent her from sending that information in, again, because it is alternative.
Ms. Moore, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, Dr. Cosby. With sending in the form to the state, you are saying that this district will go hybrid. Is that correct?
I'm saying at minimum, we will go hybrid.
Okay, okay. That's, that was what I needed clarification on. So there really isn't, is, is that something that can happen in your opinion? Because it, it seems like there seems to be a little hesitation whether it may or may not happen with even sending the form in or not. Well, you know, I didn't know how this conversation was going to go. I have not, um, as you know, gotten results back from a TMA EA sur- survey. Um, and if we don't have staff, it'd be very hard to return. And so I was hoping to, um, hear what I believe I have heard from you that you do want us to go back in some form or fashion. Um, so I, I guess what I'm hearing you say is that if I send that in on January 18th, that we do plan to return on hybrid. Um, we will all, um, anticipate and hope that, um, things continue at minimum where we are and, and maybe we can again adjust to address some of the concerns that have come up.
So when you submit that information.
Ms. Allen had, was next. Ms. Allen, you had a comment. You had your hand up. You're on mute.
Yeah, I, I just, I went through the comment. I, I'll just continue listening to the, to the conversation.
Okay, Mr. Scares.
Thank you, Madam President. So when you, when you present that to the state on the 18th or by the 18th, when we meet again on what, the 21st, the 20th? Whatever that recommendation is, I am asking that we vote on that. If that is going to be the formal recommendation on how we come back to school, I want to be able to vote on that. So she can still send out what she plans to do, provide us with what she has presented at our next regular public meeting, and that would be up for a vote. So it doesn't stop anything at all. She can still go and submit the documentation or necessary, uh, uh, required documentation to the state to let them know what our plan is. And so when you do that, present that to the board and let's put that up for a vote.
And, and I guess my only question and concern would be, um, the, the things that we vote on as a board and the things that, uh, I'm allowed to make decisions about. You know, if, if we make a vote, I don't, of course, I don't know. I'm, when I come and ask these things, um, I do want your feedback. I do intend to listen to your feedback and to try to address these things. But if everything that I would like to, um, move forward with doing what I believe is best on all the information that I gather, because I'm the one ultimately held accountable for what happens.
I, I don't think this is common practice. We don't ever put up everything that you do or your best recommendations for a vote. These are extenuating circumstances that I think this particular recommendation needs to be put to a vote, um, before the Board of Education. Um, and if, for me, you know, if the, if the recommendation is on point, then there shouldn't be any reason why that motion at the point of our next public meeting would fail and why that would change anything. But I think for me, it is very much important that this particular plan be put before the Board of Education for a vote on how we serve the families that elected us.
You know, I think maybe we should figure out if we should maybe table this for now because we, there's a lot that I think Ms., Dr. Cosby still needs to kind of sort out, work out. And I think we would probably still want to, you know, give her an opportunity and her cabinet an opportunity to still kind of work through things before just having her give us the next plan and then voting on it because she probably would want us to have feedback on whatever her next plan is. And then, you know, so I would prefer if we would table this and perhaps maybe talk about this again at a special meeting. This is a, a lot for us to, um, decide on today that we're going to vote on whatever her next, um, plan is today, and then that's just going to be it.
Yes, ma'am, I would, uh, Madam President, I would be open to that.
Yes.
We would need to make a motion. We would need to make a current motion. Hold on. We would need to make a vote on the current motion and then we would need to take another motion to table the discussion for the recommendation to return to in-person instruction for a recommended date.
Um, can I jump in? No, I, what I thought I heard was that, um, we need to, to make the decision as soon as we can. So what I'm asking is if, because parents and families do need the opportunity to plan. If we're going to come back, um, and allow some students to start on the 18th or the 19th, then we need to have time to discuss that and people need to have time to plan. If we are going to move it out, I still want to be able to say that to them as soon as possible. So waiting, um, I don't think is, is really the best thing. But I think having another meeting after I've had at least some time to confer with my administrative team and to, um, take into account everything that's been said today. But I would rather do that sooner rather than later, um, so that we can move forward.
Maybe we need to have a special meeting before the 20th or the 21st, whenever the next meeting is.
For sure. Ms. Allen, you have a comment?
Yes, I just was going to say because there's a motion on the floor, you guys either need to, Mr. Scares needs to withdraw it or you have to vote it down. So I was just.
It's been, uh, let's not leave the vote. It's been motioned and seconded, so there's a, a vote that needs to happen. Whether it be voted up or be voted down is, you know, at the discretion of the board. And then we need to make another motion to table the discussion, um, until we decide when the next meeting is going to happen.
Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Ms. Moore? You're muted. Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Um, no. Mr. Andrews?
No.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
No.
And Mrs. Bozeman? No. Motion does not carry. Is there a motion to, um, table this? And bring it back?
I'll move.
I'll second.
You're properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Only that, the meeting needs to be sooner than later. So when we talk about the special meeting, I know there's a 48-hour window. We should get that done as soon as possible. And that counts the weekend. So we can literally have this meeting on Monday or Tuesday. Okay?
I need time to talk with my, um, my new team so we can do it, you know, Tuesday.
Yeah.
We'll do it early in the week next week, but I'd like for you to check our calendars.
Okay.
If there's no other discussion, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes, the motion does carry. Okay, so that's where we're going to go with that. So we'll move, we'll move forward with that, Dr. Cosby.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we have, um, we're, we're ending at 12:30, you know, no matter what. So do you want to take a five-minute break and then come and, you know, kind of decide where you want to go from here? With the agenda, you are pick and choose where you want to go or?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know I have a, an engagement that is at the 12:30 point, so I would appreciate no breaks, if that's okay.
The magic hour. So Dr. Cosby, you can, you choose where you want to go with this.
Okay, I think, um, we can cover our strategic plan review within this timeframe. So my only question is, is there anything, um, and some of these things may be hit within, within our strategic plan review. Um, but if there are any discussion topics that need to happen today, um, if a board member would like us to do that at this point, we could, you know, potentially go there or we could, um, we could get through this, um, strategic plan review and then see if we have time left and pick those up another time if they're not urgent for today.
Let's do that. That's fine. We'll, if, if we need to pick them up another time, we will. We'll let you go ahead and get through.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, um, so as we talk about a strategic plan review, one of the things that, um, sort of happened when, when I got here, we were talking about strategically, how are we going to uh, move forward? And I was informed of the incredible work that was done on developing a strategic plan for Trotwood. That plan is still in effect. And, um, as we went through that plan as an exec board, we have agreed that it is is great, is what we need to be working from. What we found was that, um, just like any document, it's sort of big and wordy and lots of small words. People weren't really addressing it or acknowledging that the things we were doing are aligned with the strategic plan. So what we have, um, done as an executive team is we have sort of narrowed down or consolidated this work and basically we want to sort of review the priorities that you guys worked so hard on so that we're all on the same page. And, and I would like to. so that we're all on the same page. And and I would like to just start this section with um reading for those people who are on who may not remember. Everybody, I'm sure, remembers their vision, but also quickly our vision and our mission. So let me um just read that quickly. Our vision is one hundred percent student success. And I think we all understand and know that that's what we want, and there's no need to do anything but support that. The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. And boy, with COVID, we have had to move fast on that, on being innovative and and getting our staff and everyone prepared. So that is our vision and our mission. And now what I would like to do is to go through each of our six goals that we have. Um, and so Luke, if you could um present that for us. So each of um our goals, each of our goals um are sort of um in line with what different um departments are in charge of. And so each of of my executive cabinet members have taken on sharing the information. And and it's a synopsis. They're not going to read this to you, but they're going to tell you where we are with the implementation of the strategic plan that we've had in the district. So we have been working on it. And um so and I believe Lisa, you you start us off. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, good morning. Good morning again, everyone. Um, as Dr. Cosby said, you know, our work is always, we want to be intentional to make sure it supports our educational pro our strategic plan. And goal one um is our educational programs will be responsive to each and every student. And what that looks like is high-quality curriculum resources aligned to the standards and that are culturally responsive. So what are some and and you all have heard about some of the tools and purchases we've made. And and literally, I can re- recall, since we created the strategic plan, we've purchased well over one hundred thousand dollars worth of or or maybe two hundred thousand dollars worth of new uh culturally responsive literature for all of our libraries and all five buildings. Every um adoption or new curriculum purchase has been aligned to the standards and culturally responsive. I know that um we discussed just as as recently as Thursday about the importance of African-American history and making sure that our literature, our resources are aligned to the needs and to make meaning for our population. And uh within twenty-four hours, several of our tools and resources we purchased had lessons aligned to the incidents that occurred in Washington, D.C., and provided to our teachers. Since we purchased real-time online digital resources, they they include the current events. Uh, other uh new things that we have, and I know we won't have time to go through it today, is there's been a lot of discussion about how will our children express their feelings? What opportunities do they have to understand what's happening in the world and to be prepared, not only to know their history, but recognize how to be anti-racist and fight injustices in the world? So we do have a curriculum that will be part of our high school um that will provide uh real-life uh current uh social justice topics that the students will uh be able to engage in. And it's really called a moral courage course. So that's just an example of some of the things that we've done to support our priority number one with high-quality resources. Uh, we talked a little bit earlier about the common um high-quality instruction and differentiation, making sure we have a qual uh quality and common instructional framework. And as you know, we talked about designing an instructional framework and holding teachers accountable to it that meets the needs of all learners in whatever format we're in and to make sure it's high-quality and rigorous. Uh, one thing we will begin doing, as we mentioned earlier, is following up in those classrooms and seeing it in action, providing support to those that need um more um to be more targeted and to improve and also recognize those that are following it. Uh, number three is one thing that we've heard about um throughout our principal presentations. They've talked about things such as wraparound services, providing targeted instruction to students. So providing multi-tiered systems of support, our MTS system is exactly that. It's meeting the needs of the learners academically and socially, emotionally. And so one thing we've done, and we're providing ongoing training, we'll have a principal's book study that's coming up that the superintendent and myself, uh Tracy Mallory, and the state support team will be leading to make sure all schools are on board and and have a really deep understanding on how do we design those personalized learning plans for each child and actually provide it to them and have an accountability system in place to ensure that? How do we make sure we have enrichment intervention and enrichment opportunities for our students? So that comes with the multi-tiers of support. The common assessments, which is number four, high-quality common assessments, as you know, we've had benchmarking assess the the common benchmarking assessments three times a year now. We're going on the fifth year that that's been or sixth year that that's been in operation. And one thing we're doing is making sure we're looking at the results of all learners, not just the general population, but our district leadership team does an excellent job of analyzing how our students with special needs can uh actually achieving, how are gifted students, all students, breaking it down um and making sure K through twelve or pre-K through twelve, we're doing those regular benchmark assessments. With the differences in our scheduling this year because of COVID, our we have our beginning-of-the-year benchmarking assessments, and our mid-year will happen February first. Normally, by now, we would have had that second one, but because of the shift in the schedules, we'll be starting that February first. So the data systems we have uh do utilize and demonstrate the strengths and weaknesses for each child. We have several uh tools and components that do that uh for math as well as reading. And so that summarizes some of the highlights we have under goal one. Thank you.
What I would like to um remind us all is that this is not like a one- or two-year plan. Our strategic plan is is a long-term plan. So even though we have a lot of things that we have in motion, and there are some things that we have um somewhat completed, there are a lot of things that are just getting started now. They do align back. For example, um Ms. Minor mentioned the multi-tiered system of support, and then we're starting our book study. And some um staff members are a little bit farther along than others on that, and others need to catch up. So this isn't something that um next year, if you ask us, are we totally done with that? It's a process, and to get it done with fidelity, you know, we know it's going to take some time. But that's why you make, you know, a strategic plan. It's not something that we can just do right away. So we are well on our way, as um Ms. Minor just shared with us on hitting some of these, and we have to go deeper and do more on others for sure. All right, goal two. Could we get that one? Sort of shared with how how we're where we are with looking at the priorities of the plan. I believe that is Lisa and Ms. Um, I mean, Ms. Minor and Ms. Um.
Lisa, you want me to go ahead? Go with goal two? Or anything?
Yeah, you you can go ahead. Um, and then I'll jump in if if needed.
Okay. So goal two talks a lot about, um, you know, um Lisa jumped into talking about the academic and non-academic supports, and that's what that multi-tiered MTS system discusses. And so, of course, those non-academic supports fall up under um Student Support Services. And we spoke briefly in regards to, I know the principal shared a lot about their PBIS um plans and things that they have in place. And a lot of those plans impact those tier-one students. And tier-one is um those interventions and things that we offer to all of our students. But as we can see even during our discussion with our remote learning, we still have to address those tier-two and those tier-three students and families. Um, and so that's where a lot of our work this year, of course, um that is compounded with COVID, has to be addressed. And so one of the things that I'm most proud of is that we have um began an opportunity to um gather some data on our students' social-emotional learning and their behavior um and mental health in regards to, you know, how they're feeling about school, how they're feeling about life and things that are happening in this world um that we just cannot not address. Um, and so just to give you a little update on where we are with that, um, our students, so Mr. Warner talked a little bit about conscious discipline. And so that's what's happening in our early grades. And conscious discipline focuses a lot on how the adults respond to student behaviors. Um, when it comes to gathering data on social-emotional learning, there are not a lot of tools out there that assess younger students, our preschool, first grade, and third grades, because a lot of their social-emotional health has a lot to do with their developmental stage and age as well. Um, and so we look at using conscious discipline, which really focuses on how our teachers are learning to respond to our younger students. Um, when it comes to our students who are in third grade on up, there are tools that are available. And so right now, our students are going through an assessment process tool, um, and it's called a resiliency survey. And that survey um gathers data on, and the reason why I like the survey is that it not just asks questions about some of those social-emotional learning things like ostracism and bullying and things like that, but it also it has a strength-based um component in it. And you can pull out those students who have a lot of those skills in the areas of leadership and things like that, and grit and things that build resilience in our students. And we know that during a time like this, those are the things that we need to build on in our students and in our families. And before break, um, one of the things, you know, and I guess it was some new learning for me. I thought, you know, when we got the tool, it's like, great, let's assess all the students. Well, it doesn't kind of work like that. You know, when you're looking at social-emotional learning, um, you have to kind of take it in small pieces um because when you find out and learn things about our families and our students, you have to also build in time to address those issues and concerns. And so when our students take the assessment, um, they fall into priority categories. And those students who fall into that priority one are students and families that we need to address immediately, like within, it tells you, within twenty-four hours, contact this family and address this family. And then as the students fall into the other priority areas, it gives you a little bit more time to address those situations. Um, the other thing that I like about the tool that we are using is that it not only has the assessment, it also has built-in lesson plans, videos, and opportunities um and lessons that the school staff can share with families, teachers, and use to address all of the different priorities. So it doesn't just tell you, hey, this kid has fallen into a priority one or priority two. It says, hey, this kid has fallen into a priority one and two. And here are the direct resources that you can use with that family and with that student um to help support their needs. Um, so before break, we were able to um assess our third grade, seventh grade, and our ninth graders. Um, those are the students who took the first round of assessments. And as we've come back this first week since we've been back, they've been trying to gather all the makeups in those students who did not get assessed. And you have to take into consideration, you know, we're assessing virtually, so that looks kind of totally different as well. Um, next week, I know that our fourth grade, our eighth grade, and our eleventh graders will begin the assessment process and taking that resiliency survey. And so um you can't really get a full school report or a district report until you have, you know, a vast number of your students who have taken the survey. Um, but I do know that the staff um has been excited. Um, they've learned a lot of information about the surveys. Um, the parents do receive a copy of the survey as well. And then we've even gotten some feedback. You know, some of the parents, especially some of those students who fell into priority one, um, the parents were thankful because they did not know that their student was um possibly experiencing some thoughts of suicide or things like that that um need to be addressed immediately. And so um, again, I'm looking forward to being able to share some more data um with you all as we um continue to collect that data on our students. Um, so that's that. When we look into goal two, which talks more about that, um, again, engaging families and um in 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 increasing our communication and being transparent. I know Dr. Cosby and Ella has shared a lot about Allerton and how they are going to help us increase our um our social um media presence and things like that. Um, we are also currently working with the National Network of Partnership Schools. And this partnership will really help the sixth through twelfth-grade families and students strengthen those connections. So when you look at it, you know, I didn't want to chime in because I knew everybody had their thoughts about remote learning, but we are trying to um work on putting in some pieces to strengthen that home-family communication while we're on in this remote learning world. Because we do know that there are some families that are struggling, you know. We I I I don't think I I don't believe, and I I know for sure that we don't have a lot of families who have just totally withdrawn their students and taking them somewhere where they can have some in-person learning. Um, but that does not negate the fact that we do have some families, you know, we get the I get the calls when families are not happy in regards to what's happening. And most of the time, once I listen to the parent, the real frustration is that they do want their kid in school because it's hard for them to manage um that piece. And that's where a lot of our families just need that support. Um, they can't necessarily say, well, what do I need? Because they don't need you to send them another link so the kid can have some one-on-one with the teacher. They need some support in trying to manage it all um with especially those families that have more than one or two students at home. And so um that national network of partnership is helping. Um, and then there's also a partnership that we have with Montgomery County. It's called Montgomery County Engage. Um, and they have dedicated some resources and time to help us um strategically engage those disengaged learners. So just so you know, we do have those learners on our radar too. And those are those learners who not just kind of get on, you know, sometimes these are the ones who have totally disengaged from learning. And and most often times, you know, when we looked at those numbers, those are the students who really kind of disengage from education, period. You know, even when we're in a traditional world, they are disengaged. So remote has just not helped the situation. And so um those things are on our radar as well.
Ms. Mallory, thank you so much, and I apologize. I knew that somebody had two things they had to deal with. And um I thought I thought at our meeting that um you and Lisa were sort of, you were probably talking together. And so I I thought you would um do that. I did want to also um let everyone know that when we look at goal two, um, section two, it talks about equitable equitable access to a full range of services. And we are really training up now on the difference between things being equitable and things being equal and what what that equity piece mean. So um we're out, we're involved, the administrative team, in um MCELI, which is the Montgomery County Equity Leadership Institute. And so we're meeting um it's pretty much monthly and and having some people come in and and we're working through equity and what what that looks like. And it's so far been very interesting. So the things that we are focused on, and as you can see, it's a lot, and we still have a few more to go through, are all aligned to what we already have, what was already developed in our strategic plan. So now we're at goal four, and that's Dr. Davis.
Hello. Your goal four is for us to recruit, develop, retain highly effective teachers and staff members committed to continuous improvement. And so looking at that recruitment piece, um due to COVID, our traditional job fairs are not taking place, but making a conscious effort to maintain those relationships, reaching out to our different universities, our partners, and our um our different um networks to make sure that we are, they understand that we do have positions that are available. I'm working very closely. I'm working very closely with the treasurer this next upcoming week in terms of doing a staffing audit to make sure that we are have a perfect size in terms of we have the staff that are needed to meet the needs of our students. And so, we'll be looking closely at staffing ratios and making decisions for that. And then, posting our positions and making sure that we are actively seeking the talented and diverse educators. In regards to that development piece, we're providing coaching, mentoring and professional development to all staff members. It's not just for our teachers and our administrators, but all of the staff at Trotwood Madison City Schools. So, our custodians, our food service workers, making sure that they are receiving coaching, proper mentoring and have opportunities to do professional development. I know that cultural competence piece is very large in the district. And so, making sure that everyone understands culturally responsive practices as they are interacting with our students. And then, in terms of retention, the district has done a very great job in terms of retaining our staff members. I was on a call yesterday with Central Ohio Human Resources Directors. And we were the only district on that call who have not laid staff members off as a result of COVID and who are continuing to pay our staff members. And so, that is a huge attraction for Trotwood Madison Schools in terms of the care that we have for our staff members and being able to provide that quality work environment where we can make Trotwood Madison City Schools a destination employer. Where when people are looking for jobs, they come to our job board and they're seeking information for us and trying to find out what vacancies we have so that they can join our team. I will be updating our website as we identify what those positions are, making sure that they are posted and that our community knows what we have available and just moving forward with that. So, we've done a lot of work in terms of our recruitment, development and retention, and we will continue that good work.
Good job. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Okay, so, the fifth goal, that's the goal that I will be addressing. That goal says, "We will establish an ongoing system for continuously improving our learning communities." And this is one of the things that is sort of set up through ODE when they have districts that they want to give more support to. And, you know, to, to be quite honest, a lot of this is best practices. I think that the things that we're doing here, we should do even when we get beyond, you know, sort of being required to do these things from the state. So, it says that we will develop an OIP, which is an Ohio Improvement Plan that will, that we will use to then evaluate what we're doing and if necessary, will make modifications. We start by having a vision and a mission, which we do have. I've already mentioned those. Then, you develop, you know, a strategy, some action plans that go along with it. And then, you evaluate, and it's like an ongoing circle, thus being, you know, a continuous plan. So, it's, it's very important to note that what we're doing is based on data. It's based on what it is that we are gathering as the data to help us modify that plan. So, this is what is pushing us and, and you don't have to push us hard because we value it and understand the need for the use of data. I did want to share with you, we just had a meeting yesterday or day before yesterday. These days do seem to blend with the state. Ms. Clarice Franklin, you all probably know her. We've worked with her. And she reminded me, because I'm new of all the supports that we have and we are taking advantage of them. We work with the State Support Team Number Ten, which is led by Betsy Appolito. She's been working with the district now for years. And we get provided tools and resources on how to achieve our vision. Our support is differentiated. We do a one-needs assessment, which helps us determine what it is in our district that we need. So, we don't have to get the same thing that happens other places. We're unique and then they allow us to work and provide for our students and staff in a unique way. We will continue to work on the areas that we need improvement in and we will continue to modify. And those are college and career readiness, community and family engagement, curriculum instruction and assessment, fiscal management, leadership, administration and governance. And the reason why I went through those in school climate and support is because as you're listening to us go through these, those are the topics we're hitting as we go on. So, we are involved and we are understanding that the support is out there for us. We're taking advantage of it. And you should be very proud of, of your team, that you have a great team. Board, they really appreciate and understand this. Also, Lisa did mention that we are about to work with that State Support Team to get our MTSS rolling out there too. So, we're going to go on and do Goal Six because we'd like to leave a little time for questions or discussion if anybody has anything. And so, that would be our wonderful treasurer and also Mr. Howard, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
I'll start, Ms. Allen, because I, I'm really that aspect of Goal One. Our focus of maintaining safe and healthy facilities, ensuring that through our preventative maintenance plans, through our, our 20-year capital improvement plans, plan that we have, that we maintain, upgrade, retrofit, revise our, our facilities and, and maintain the, the buildings that we have as well as identifying and ensuring that when things are needed, when things are, are, are up or due for upgrades, we, we, we have the correct funding sources to ensure that these buildings stay as beautiful as they are. The second bullet is refining cleaning tasks to ensure safe and healthy environments. No more than ever, through the COVID pandemic, have we had to refine and revisit how we, how we clean our buildings to ensure that our students, our staff, visitors and any other stakeholders come into a clean, safe and healthy environment. Many of the things that have been installed or, or added to what we have done in the past will most likely carry on from this point out. You know, just the general cleaning and sanitizing of buildings and disinfecting. You know, COVID has showed us that, you know, during this time, that there are a lot of other things, there are a lot of other resources. And with the, with the, the funding that we've received, we've been able to, you know, purchase a, a lot of those items to, to ensure that when folks come into our building, they can feel safe and feel that, that they are coming into an environment that is clean and healthy. Most specifically being the, the installation of the, the new air filtration system that assures that 99% of the, the airborne pathogens that, that are present in our buildings are, are eliminated. So, those are some of the things as, as we look into moving into, you know, the 21st century, not only from the standpoint of learning, but the standpoint of facility maintenance that, that COVID has, has presented opportunities for, for my department to grow and to, to stay up, up to speed on the, the changing aspects of ensuring that we are doing our part to keep these buildings safe and healthy.
Okay, thank you. Number two on that, it says, "Increase communication and input for community stakeholders." I just wanted to say that every month with the, with my, with the Finance Committee members, and that's Mr. Scares and Mrs. Judith Freeman, we go over, I think it's around 10 different reports. And those reports range from how the revenue and expenditures compare to our five-year forecast. There are also the three-year comparison to see how we're doing based on last year and how we're doing based on the year before. There's food service reports that show how much money we're receiving for food services and also their related expenses. There's a grant report that shows revenue and expenditures on all of our grants. So, we try very hard to make that as transparent as possible. Three of those reports that we do go over are presented monthly at the board meetings. And that is our cash balances report, our system reports. It's what's on the actual system. And the last one will be checks over $1,000. So, we can be transparent, transparent not only to the board, but to our community as, as a whole. So, in the past, the various, various audiences, it says, "Provide frequent financial and operational reporting to various audiences." And so, obviously, in the last year or so, we have not had the opportunity to go out and really present. However, in, in the future, I would like to have again, State of the Union address where we did both academic and the financial information to our community, our staff. We had a separate meeting for that. We also presented financial information at the Joint City of Trotwood Meetings. And then, obviously, our information is available on the website. And the third one, it says, "Develop the measurement standards." From Goal One through Five, you can see that there are specific measurement standards that have already been aligned. But I think that we need to probably do a very, just a one-pager basically to show Goal One through Six and our, what we've done and how that's measured. And so, we need to develop that particular document. Number Funds, number four says, "Use a comprehensive budget process that aligns the district's resources to student achievement." So, I wanted to, I looked back and I was researching way back. So, the Academic Distress Commission obviously audited what we did in terms of the financial arena. And they indicated to us that we needed to develop a comprehensive budget process. So, I work with K-12 Consulting to develop that program. And the first budget book was rolled out on August 8, 2015 at a board retreat. And so, we've done those books since FY16. So, the last five years, there have been books put together that for the most part have identified the goals and objectives and how those measurement, how those goals and objectives were measured. And so, with the new superintendent, we will start to work on that. Dr. Davis mentioned that we're starting our staffing comparison. So, we're beginning that budget process and we will continue to do some semblance of the budget process according to what Dr. Cosby would like to put in, in the book as well. Obviously, everything that we try to do is aligned, any district resources are aligned to our student achievement goals. And then, the last point is increase frequency and monitoring transparent reporting. And that goes back to what I talked about a little bit. But specifically, I wanted to say that behind the scenes in the Treasurers Department, we are monitoring everything. So, the vendor checks, we have a company called Bonefish that we actually run through all our vendors to make sure that they're not on this list on the, the federal government list that we're not supposed to be doing business with them. We implemented strategic solutions this past year for a new accounts payable package where we go, we sit down every Wednesday and go through every single requisition that is asked for in the district. And that's department and building ask. And we just go over what it, what it is, what the account codes are. And we just make sure that it is a proper public purpose. And that's what the state auditors ask us to do all, every time. And then, obviously, we work very closely with the Human Resources Department to make sure that our employees are paid accurately and that everything that they're being paid, the Board of Education has approved. And the last, well, several, several things, grants. We obviously have a monthly grant meeting to make sure that those expenditures and revenues are accounted for properly. And then, all of that ties into our project check, project cash request. And then, the CCIP, which is an ODE form that we have to, to maintain. And so, that's all I had to say.
That was wonderful. Thank you. I think everyone did a good job of wanting to assure you that we are sticking to our strategic plan, which is, of course, very important. And if you have any questions or anything that you would like to see us, you know, maybe put a little focus on more right now, let us know. But I do want you to know, everything that we do, and since, you know, that I'm here now and as we meet in exact cabinet and we meet weekly, we will have to know where it aligns to the strategic plan. If we're asking to do something, purchase something, you know, add a person, add a person, where does it align with the strategic plan? And everything should fall within those six strategic goals. Anybody have any questions? If not, then I am going to ask that we go over the superintendent's goals. We'll skip those because I did sort of mention them at the board meeting. And I know that Mrs. Mallory is holding on to a conversation that she wanted to have with you about supplementals. And then, that way, we can just go on and, and get that one done. Is that okay? Okay. Mrs. Mallory?
Yes, okay. You want me to do, you want to do the supplementals?
Yes, and, and I think it will carry us on to the next time. And we will end supplemental.
Well, hopefully, I think I can share my screen. And so, let's see here. Yep, I think it's working.
While, while she's getting that, Madam, Madam President, the last three topics on the agenda were mine. We can forego those if it's okay with you. And we can discuss those at a later time.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I guess, in talking to Dr. Cosby, the board wanted maybe some more details in regards to the information that was shared at the board meeting a few weeks ago in regards to supplementals. And so, what I was able to do, and it is kind of small, I know. So, I can send it to each of the board members as well personally. But I did go through and just take an opportunity to just organize all of the data that I had received. And so, it is organized by school. So, that first area that you see is the high school. The next area that you see is the middle school in Westbrook because I believe Madison Park and ELC shared that they did not have any first semester extracurricular activities. And so, I guess I wanted to just kind of open it up to the board members. I wasn't sure what more information that you were looking for, needed. But I did also ask the principals to be prepared to speak to some things that I may not be able to answer in regards to your questions.
Ms. Moore, you had a comment?
Yeah, that was the item I put on the agenda, Madam President. And, and thank you so much, Ms. Mallory, for the spreadsheet. And I was asking if all the board members could have this spreadsheet, okay? Because frankly, I can't see it. I mean, I, I.
I don't want you all to kind of see all the stuff on my screen, but you're going to see it because I actually have an email already prepared. I just hadn't pushed the send button. So, how about that?
Thank you so much. And it was just for information only. I know it's something that the board said that we wanted to continue to monitor. So, just information. I don't personally have any questions other than we wanted to see the original documents.
Okay. Good deal. I just pushed the send button.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that was all you wanted to talk about? We're good on the supplementals?
We are good to go. Thanks.
So, Mr. Scares, did you want to talk about yours? Or do you want to go ahead and just forego those?
The last three I can, I can forego. I would like an update though on the Black History Curriculum.
Okay, is it okay if I go, Dr. Cosby?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to give everyone an update on where we are with our Black History Curriculum that we're excited about for grades pre-K through 12 comprehensive. The last time we met and talked about it, I really broke down the standards and, and what topics of Black History per grade been on a pretty extensive PowerPoint. And I wanted to just update everyone to let them know that the research is still happening. We're still embedding grades K through, pre-K through Five, African-American history embedded into the social studies courses. So, that by the time, as early learners, they'll have a comprehensive understanding of their history, their identity. Some of the research says that as kids know more about themselves and have pride in themselves and helps them perform better. So, the goal is for them to make connections to their history, their community and their, their role in society through learning. For example, as they're learning in social studies and the topics of the Ohio standards are. are people in the community and resources, it'll be a natural thing to embed when they're talking about doctors and people like that, Daniel Hale Williams, Charles R. Drew, and even Dr. Dickens, who's right here in the community, so that those kids as a younger age will make connections. So, those are some of the things that we're embedding in addition to the solid historical facts that we want them all to learn. Now, as they grow older, we're wanting them to know more, and how does the African-American history impact the global society? So, things that are happening, current events. So, I know that there's a lot of concern about what's happening in a world today. Well, how do we make those connections? We have a partnership with the Human Rights Center, Rights Center of the University of Dayton, who their Political Science Department has actually created a curriculum for high schoolers that's on moral courage. So, as this, you know, our goal is for the kids to have definitely an understanding of themselves and who they are and African-American history. But bigger than that, we know our students are going to need to know how to identify racism and know how to respond to systemic racism in the world. So, the course that we are partnering with UD on and implementing at our high school is just that. The Political Science Department, when they wanted an opportunity for high school students to have an understanding of what happens when there's a major event such as Michael Brown, the killings and things that are happening, what do the activists that are successful, the social justice, civil rights activists do? So, the curriculum is all around that. And so, what I'm going to do is give you all just a teaser and share some of it. Let me go ahead and get this ready to present. What I will do is play, it's, they did a podcast. They actually, when Michael Brown was shot, they actually traveled to St. Louis and interviewed activists. My screen is stuck. Oh, shoot. I don't know if you all can hear me. My screen just froze completely. Let me...
We can hear you, Lisa, but you do look frozen.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll just keep talking. It's my whole screen just frozen. I can't get it to move. So, I'll just describe what the course is. They actually traveled to St. Louis, and they interviewed social justice activists. And they have a podcast that the students will get to listen to and respond to. What is it like to fight civil rights? What are some of the responses from the killing of Michael Brown? What are some things that we can do as individuals to fight this racism? So, we have it as a pilot that will be introducing some of those lessons with our high schoolers, and that will be part of our African-American experience as well. So, I really want you to hear a little bit of it, because I know we have some time, so I'm gonna try to boot out. And my whole screen is frozen. And I apologize. I don't know what happened just now.
Can you send it to Luke in an email and allow him to share it?
Yeah. I don't know. When I try to even log out, it...
I guess it logged her out. Too weird, because we could hear her fine. While we're waiting, I do have a question. Ms. Jeter Freeman, which one of these items did you put on the agenda? You're on mute.
I don't think I had an item on there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
The story of Ferguson begins with a single refrain.
Four hours? Is August?
When people saw his body in the street, they couldn't no longer not see it. And that's the catalyst that we needed, I guess, to say, we're done allowing this to continue to happen without us doing anything about it.
The Icelandic nature of how he was killed, honestly, is what spread it to consciousness. And I think it's kind of funny how people question that, because like, there's a dead body in the street supporting him. His parents are there. There's footage of his parents trying to approach the body to cover it. What do you mean, how did this happen? Like, it's there, you can see how it happened. This doesn't happen every day.
Oh, I'll stop it.
And then, maybe we should share a podcast with the board.
I'll do that. I'll do that. And so, that's, I'm sorry you couldn't hear it that clear, and I can share it with you all, but it's the audio of some of the civil rights and the social activists that worked with Michael Brown. And the whole curriculum is around what to do to counter racism. And so, it's a piece that will be added into that core pre-K to 12 curriculum. And just wanted to give a highlight of that, because it's something that's new since the last time we spoke.
Okay. Is there anything else with that?
No, that's everything.
Perfect. Is there anything else we need to cover today for the retreat? Board, do you have anything else you need to add? I'm not going to do a round robin. Just if anyone on the board has anything else to add, you can just, I guess, shout it out, since we're still loose. Just shout, just shout it out. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
I just wanted to say, for our government classes, you know, this is that opportunity, and I think I mentioned this before, where we can allow our middle school and high school students, Ms. Bozeman, to have that podcast that you host with your sons on these very issues. So, we've got to come forward. When we say, what are they doing? There is no better platform. You know, our student government, our honest society, let's give them a avenue to have that conversation. I do like the course. I like that. But we're in a now where, you know, people have podcasts all the time. So, let's let, let's speak to our teachers about allowing that opportunity for our students, you know? And I just want to say that because I see those students at Westbrook do their little thing in the morning. It is so put together. I mean, they pass off to each other, and I just love it. And so, why can't we have the same type podcast you have, Ms. Bozeman? That's what I'm looking for in this 21st century.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. We're gonna start ours at 3 o'clock. We're talking about white privilege today. Mr. Andrews, you have your hand up. You're on mute.
Yes, ma'am, I do. I wanted to kind of piggyback off what Ms. Jeter Freeman just mentioned, but also, one of the things that I would like for us to look at, at some point as we, you know, progress, is how we address, in conjunction with our self-awareness and self-empowerment and things, our financial literacy for our students. I think that's real critical. The more I learn, the more I hear, the more I talk with younger people, the more concerned I am. I think that's going to be very critical, a very critical element as we try to move ourselves forward, that we have to be, we have to become more sophisticated and more knowledgeable about finance and personal finance and responsibility and all those kind of things. So, I don't know if that will be a course or just be something that we can, you know, embed in courses that are presently offered, those kind of things. I don't know. But I would like for us to discuss that at some point.
Perfect. Thank you. I did. I just wanted to, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Andrews, because I wanted to just let everyone know that the State of Ohio came out with new financial literacy standards that does cover K all the way to 12 last year. And then, this year in November, they actually developed the model curriculum for K through 12. Currently, it is a requirement. Financial literacy is a requirement for middle school and high school. So, we do currently have it embedded. At the high school, there is a personal finance class, and they also have an economics class. So, they either get it in the economics or the personal finance class. And at the middle school, it's embedded in their social studies standards. But during the eighth grade year, there's a unit that hits it even deeper with roles and responsibilities and banking and things like that. So, it is there, but we do expect to even enhance it more because of the new standards that just came out and the new model curriculum that we'll be implementing next year that's pre-K to 12 that the ODE just came out with in November.
Mr. Andrews, you're on mute.
I don't want to belabor the issue or anything, but I hope as we're implementing these programs, that it's possible that we can kind of fine-tune them or tailor them for our student body in particular, because I think that, in general, that is a need everywhere. Most young people need a little more sophistication with that. But I think that our need in our communities is more acute than maybe in some others. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to address that and tailor it more specifically for our student body, so that they will be aware of the other pitfalls and things that don't necessarily, that they will have to deal with, that don't necessarily get covered in the standardized curriculum.
Jeter Freeman, your hand is up. Is it still up from last time, or did you have another comment? Oh, it was up from last time. Okay. Ms. Minor, if you have another comment, your hand is up. You're on mute, though.
Okay. Let me take my hand down. I apologize.
Okay. Just make a little comment. I do know that also there's opportunity for local banks, and they like to come in to these classes and share financial literacy information. And so, maybe we could sort of ask them to address specifically those things. I know what you're talking about, Mr. Andrews, that they won't put in a standard curriculum, but that our people are dealing with on a daily basis. So, I know we can look into that, and I know that they love doing that kind of thing. It's like a volunteer project for them. And of course, they want you to be familiar with their banks, so they have a reason to provide these services. So, Ms. Minor, we can look into that, too, as an option. Okay. And then, Ms. Jeter Freeman? Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen?
Okay. I thought you said Ms. Jeter Freeman. I was just gonna say, last year, I think it was last year, that the Dayton chapter, the Links, presented to eight of our senior English classes on the financial literacy program that the National Links Chapter supports. And so, obviously, we will be willing to do that, and even more than eight classes or more than one time. And so, what that was, we, I presented eight, I think, four classes, and then a peer of mine presented another four classes. And we talked about credit, you know, just the pitfalls, and like Mr. Andrews was saying, that that's applicable to our students. Like, you know, when kids go to college, and this is all kids, when they go to college, they have these institutions that want you to sign up for things, and then they're on the hook for another two years or whatever on something. They don't even know what they signed up for. So, Dr. Cosby, I will talk to you a little, and Ms. Minor, I'll talk to you a little bit more about those programs.
Thank you. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
There is a person that approached my youngest son to say, at Fifth Third Bank. In fact, it was Mr. Long. He used to be in our district. His wife works for Fifth Third. So, in their conversation, she mentioned that they have a program, and she would like to be on the agenda, I don't know if it's her or someone from Fifth Third, to share with us their presentation for working with schools on that. So, if, Madam President, we can look and see what her availability is, and we can maybe get her to do a presentation, and that would be Fifth Third, and they have a program.
Sounds good. Mr. Andrews, you have your hand up?
Yes, ma'am. One more belaboring. We have a couple of students who, that I know of, that are officers and things of significant rank in a lot of the local, in a couple of the local banks, one of whom, last time I spoke with them, was a regional manager for one of the other banking systems other than Fifth Third. So, there's a variety, or there might be a number of people or sources that we might be able to use that have direct connections to Trotwood and might be more amenable to doing this, and might add a little more relevancy to some of our students if they're able to maybe present or just to develop or coordinate a program for us.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Allen, is that the same hand, or is that a new one that you have up? Is that a new hand, Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen? Okay. If there are no other questions, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Wait, I have something.
Oh, okay. Why didn't you say a hand?
I have one thing. I have one thing. Before we adjourn, I would just like to say thank you to the district. I came home yesterday, and I was so surprised, and I just was brought to tears. Thank you so much. I don't know if you guys can see what's behind me. I moved my computer. Do you see that? These were from the district yesterday. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Just goes to show how conscientious our people are and how considerate they are, and you guys really shocked and surprised me. Thank you.
I do, I do have one last thing, very short. Very short. I had the opportunity to help volunteer with the food service workers during the distribution of the hams that was donated by the Wright Foundation. And I just want to say, they work, they be moving.
Yeah.
And I think I was in their way. But I appreciate them letting me help out, and thank you to Mr. Howard for stopping by. I just want everybody to know how much of a good job they, they really, really do get that food distributed to our community. So, thank you.
Anything else? I was able to participate as well, and I was amazed at the work that was done. And I did want to say that the reason that we sent those flowers was because, being the board president, and I don't mean to scare you, Ms. Bozeman, is... And we appreciate all that you put into it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Trust me, no one can scare me more than Ms. Moore has already... Yeah. I'm gonna call you after this. I can say, thank you, everyone, for giving up flowers on your Saturday. I appreciate your time. I know how valuable it is. That's why I wanted to start right on time this morning, and that's why I'm trying to end at least a little bit early this afternoon, because I know how valuable your time is. or a little bit early this afternoon, because I know how valuable your time is. Are there any other questions that need to be addressed before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there any question? Are there any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
And who's second? And I missed the second.
I did.
Okay, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. I will see you guys at our special meeting next week.
Yes.
Have fun.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you.